Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the South San Francisco City Council to order for Wednesday, June 11th. Can I have roll call, please? Here. Here.
Present.
Here. Present. This time, I'd like to call up, we have our wonderful former Commissioner, Cultural Arts Commissioner, Michael DiNatale. If you could please come up to the podium and lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to, please stand and place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next item? Do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have a cancellation of the joint special meeting of the City Council on the Successor Agency this evening.
Okay, duly noted. We'll put that into the record. Next item, please.
Moving on to Levine Act disclosures. Does the Council have any reporting?
None. Thank you. Next item?
Announcements from staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and community members. My name is Devin Stenhouse. I'm the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer for the City of South San Francisco. I have three announcements that I would love to share with you today. It is not too late to join the South San Francisco contingent at the Third Annual San Mateo County Pride Parade this Saturday, June 14th, at 10:00 a.m. in San Mateo. We will walk with 40 other contingents within the parade from Second and B Street and end at Central Park in San Mateo where we will celebrate the county's 13th annual pride celebration. Whether you consider yourself a member of the LGBTQIA+ community or consider yourself an ally of the community, we want you to join us in celebration of Pride Month with friends, family, and neighbors within our great county. Those who participate will also be able to purchase in sport our South San Francisco Proud t-shirts to show support and unity as a city. This is a free, friendly, family event, and registration is required. Please scan the QR to register. Second, with the exception of our Public Safety Department's Public Works Standby and Water Quality Control Plant, all city facilities and offices will be closed next Thursday, June 19th, in observance of Juneteenth National Holiday. And finally, if you are not able to attend the county's pride parade, that is definitely okay. We encourage you to join us right here in South San Francisco on Saturday, June 28th, at 10:00 a.m. at the South City Proud Event. The City of South San Francisco, Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, and the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce are hosting a celebration in the breezeway adjacent to 366 Grand Avenue. This pride celebration will be emceed by the voice of the Bay Area, Mr. St. John, and feature vendors, live music, and special food menus from several restaurants along Grand Avenue and beyond. We will also feature a fashion show where community members of all ages are encouraged to show off their liveliest attires for special prizes. Again, do not forget your South San Francisco Proud t-shirts, and we definitely hope to see you there.
Thank you very much, Devin. Appreciate it. Lots of great events happening this month. Next item, please.
Presentations. Item one, Proclamation Recognizing Juneteenth as Freedom Day.
Tonight, as we commemorate Juneteenth, a day that honors freedom, resilience, and the ongoing pursuit of equality, we are reminded of the importance of voices of resilience and unwavering commitment to justice, to inclusion, and community empowerment. I'd like to read the following into the record from the proclamation. Whereas June 19, 1865, Union General Gordon Granger led troops into Govistin, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War in the insidious institution of slavery; and whereas the Emancipation Proclamation issued by President Abraham Lincoln had legally freed slaves in Texas on January 1st, 1863, almost two and a half years earlier, even after the general order, some slave masters withheld the information from their slaves, holding them as slaves through one more harvest season. And whereas a word spread about Granger's announcement, celebrations broke out across the state, Juneteenth, short for June 19th, commemorates this day, which marked the effective end of slavery in the United States. It goes on to say, whereas on Juneteenth, we recommit ourselves to the work of equity, of equality, justice, and we celebrate the centuries of struggle and hope that we have brought us, that have brought us to this time of progress and possibility. That work has been led throughout our history by abolitionists and educators, civil rights advocates and lawyers, courageous activists and trade unionists, public officials and everyday Americans who have helped make real the ideals, the ideals of founding documents for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of South San Francisco declares June 19th to 2025 as a city holiday and urges all South San Franciscans to honor and reflect on the significant role that African Americans and Black community have played in the history of the United States and how they have enriched society through their steadfast commitment to promoting unity and equity. Tonight, we are proud to present this proclamation to our South San Francisco Commissioner, Carol Sanders. If I could ask you to come up to the podium, her dedicated service on our South San Francisco Commission on Equity and Public Safety, as well as a resident here of South San Francisco. Commissioner Sanders has been a steadfast advocate for justice, for inclusion, and community empowerment. Her thoughtful leadership and commitment to equity have helped shape meaningful conversations in the Commission and policies that reflect the values of our diverse city. Like Commissioner Sanders, her work embodies the spirit of this day and promise of a more just future for all. Please help me welcome Commissioner Sanders.
Honorable members of the City Council, distinguished guests, and federal city, community members, I stand before you today with deep gratitude as we commemorate Juneteenth, a day that marks both freedom and the ongoing pursuit of justice. It is an honor to accept this proclamation, not just as recognition of history, but as a call to action to continue fostering equity, understanding, and the promise of a better future. Juneteenth reminds us that freedom was hard won, but the work of true liberation is never finished. It calls upon each of us to uplift education, opportunity, and unity in our communities. Today, as we celebrate, let us also reflect on the responsibility we all share to honor the past by shaping a more inclusive and just tomorrow. Thank you for this recognition and for your commitment to the principles that Juneteenth represents. May we continue to move forward together.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders. Next item, please.
Item two, Proclamation Celebrating June as LGBTQIA+ Month.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Coleman to present this proclamation.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor Eddy. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am honored to present this proclamation celebrating Pride Month in our city, not just as a celebration, but as a statement of our values, our solidarity, and our resistance. This month reminds us of the beauty and the strength of the LGBTQ+ community and of the long, hard-fought journey for liberation. But it also reminds us of where pride began, not as a parade, not as a month for celebration, but as a protest. The first pride was a riot. In June of 1969, LGBTQ people led by trans women of color like Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera rose up against then-police brutality at the Stonewall Inn in New York City. That night sparked a movement. It was loud, it was unapologetic, and it was necessary. Today, we honor that legacy by recognizing how far we have come in the fight, but that that fight is not over. Across the country, LGBTQ people are once again being targeted, used as political punching bags by far-right extremists. Over the past years, we've seen an alarming rise in discriminatory bills across state legislators all across the country aimed at banning books, aimed at censoring curriculum, criminalizing gender-affirming care, healthcare decisions made between an individual and their doctor, and erasing trans youth from public life. These attacks are not just political games, they are acts of cruelty that put a multitude of lives at risk. In moments like these, it's easy to feel helpless, but here in South San Francisco, we choose a different path. We chose last week to raise the flag, our pride flag, and tonight to pass this proclamation to say that our LGBTQ+ neighbors, our friends, and family belong here. You are not alone, you are not a debate or a political constituency, you are a human being worthy and deserving of love, respect, and acceptance. This is a commitment tonight, a commitment to stand up against all hate, a commitment to keep our city a place of inclusion, dignity, and justice, and a commitment to protect and uplift our LGBTQ+ community, not just during Pride Month, but of every month of the year. And at the root of what we are fighting for is something fundamental. It is about bodily autonomy, the right to exist as we are, the right to love who we love, and the right to access the healthcare we need, the right to make decisions about our own bodies without shame, without coercion, and without interference. That right belongs to all of us without exception. So let us pass this proclamation and celebrate it for the elders who paved the way, for those who are living out and proud, and for those who are still finding their voice and do not feel yet safe to do so. Let us, remind us that pride is not just about being seen, it is about being safe, supported, and free. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize and present this proclamation to Michael DiNatale, who is a former Chair and Commissioner of the South San Francisco Cultural Arts Commission, with this proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month in our city. Michael has been a vibrant force in South City's cultural and creative life, bringing vision, heart, and authenticity to everything he touches. As a proud member of the LGBTQ+ community, Michael has championed inclusive representation in arts, ensuring that our public spaces and cultural programs reflect the full spectrum of our city's diversity. So thank you, Michael, and I have this proclamation for you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman, Mayor, Vice Mayor, other Councilmembers, city staff. I know you have a long meeting, but I have a few words I'd like to say because I do feel it's meaningful. So this month for me is a time of healing. It also reminds us that the quality of one's life is really shaped by the acceptance and the inclusiveness of their community. It's not just the LGBTQ+ community that has to be proud, it's everybody in South San Francisco. Because here in South San Francisco, you, we, everyone has created a community that's inclusive, supporting all genders, ethnicities, abilities, and faiths. The commitment to diversity makes our community stronger and safer, and a better place to live, work, and raise a family. And we all know that. We share this collective experience, one rooted in connection, love, and the freedom to grow into our truth. I'm proud to share and accept my truth as a 45-year-old cisgender gay male who grew up here in South San Francisco. When I was younger, I remember walking the hallways at school scared someone might find out. I remember kids being questioned, ridiculed, and bullied for their natural mannerisms and the sound of their voice. And I was bullied too, sometimes just by association. I remember one kid being kicked out and disowned by their family. He resorted to survive on the streets, and I remember that some, including him, here in this community, lost their lives as a result. I kept my truth inside. I laughed at jokes that hurt me, and I prayed that I'd grow out of it. But you don't grow out of being who you are. You grow into it when your community allows you to, when it's safe. Today, I can live authentically, but I still recognize the privilege I hold as a passing white male. And what does that mean? It means that some may look at me and not see that I'm gay. They won't see the adversity that I've faced, or that I face today still. But that doesn't mean the journey wasn't real or that it's still not over. So for me, it's been a lifelong journey. For many others, it's just beginning, especially for our trans community. They're under attack nationwide, as Councilmember Coleman had mentioned, and it is our birthright to express and be who we are. Our youth, they know who they are. Confusion, self-hatred, and fear don't come from within, they come from outside forces. LGBTQIA+ people plus, face, people, face higher risks of violence and mental health struggles, not because of who we are, but because of rejection, isolation, and trauma that we've endured at home, in our communities, and in the media. There are still kids right now, right here in this community, who cry themselves to sleep at night because they hear the people they love say that who they are is wrong. Some of them won't make it to adulthood, not because of who they are, but because of how we fail to love them. So what do they need? Our community is capable of this, and we're doing this, and we need to continue doing this. But they need space, they need safety, they need us to trust them, accept them, and love them unconditionally. This is a call for all of us to resist complacency, to be kind, to speak out, and to do the right thing, to accept and love your neighbor for who they are. Then, we need to be sure that we extend this kindness to everybody outside of our community. Take action beyond South San Francisco and let these ripples of love from our community reach those who need it most around our country. Imagine a world where no one feels like they have to hide, where every child is safe, seen, and celebrated. That future is possible because of you. Be present, be proud, and be that healing light for someone, for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Council comments, requests.
Great. Who wants to start this evening? Councilmember Nagales, I'm going to lead us off. You're not on. Can you hear me now? There you go. I don't feel like I really need a microphone at times. As Councilmember Coleman mentioned and staff mentioned, we had a wonderful pride flag raising the other day. I want to thank the mayor and staff for putting that together. It was really wonderful to see our community come together and celebrate love. So thank you for everyone being there. I look forward also attending the county pride celebration. As staff mentioned, we welcome you to come walk with us on that great celebration. I also attended a nice event in Westboro, a Westboro Middle School. They were doing a groundbreaking for their new field. They're going to put a new synthetic soccer field there. If you've passed by Westboro Middle School, if you've seen that soccer field, you know how terrible that shape is. So it's great that they're going to be putting and installing a new field. And I'm wondering, I know we have members of the school liaison committee and looking at the city manager, but maybe at some point, we could have a conversation with the school district about doing some sort of MOU, so that I'm pretty sure that our members over the soccer community are going to be interested in using that field. So perhaps we can reach out to them and see what we can do in terms of partnering with the school district. I had attended Supervisor Jackie Spears Town Hall. It was well-attended, and she still has South City in her heart. And so I wanted to thank her for coming to South San Francisco. And really quick, I follow in terms of appropriations. These are requests that we submit on behalf of the city, that federal funds that can come back and we use for the community. I'm happy to, I'm proud to say that there were several requests that were accepted, that were submitted on our behalf. Senator Padilla and Senator Schiff, they submitted on our behalf jointly $3 million to fund a new fire station. And our very own Kevin Mullen is going to be submitting $2 million for the Westboro PK Center. So still a long way to go. Just because they submitted doesn't mean we're going to get the money. There's still a long process for that. But it's nice to know that our federal representatives are looking out for us and that there'll be federal dollars for us to improve our community. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember. Former Mayor Kevin Mullen, South San Francisco Mayor. Thank you. Yes, of course. Yes, thank you. Councilmember Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. Last, or two Sundays ago, June 1st, our South San Francisco Police Officers Association hosted a pancake breakfast for seniors that was quite well-attended. The community got to meet our new officers and new recruits and explorers. That was really a fun event. And on June 5th, our South San Francisco Fire Department honored their two new members and host of the well-deserved promotions, including the promotion of our Deputy Fire Chief Devin Flannery. On Friday, like Councilmember Nagales said, we were at the pride flag raising. We were blessed with such a beautiful weather, and a lot of community members participated in the festivities. The same afternoon, Mayor Flores, Councilmember Coleman, and I attended the Class of 2025 Leadership Council Graduates' graduation, and including our Assistant City Manager and Communication, Rich Lee, and our Communications Manager, Angela Lau. Great to see a lot of San Mateo County leaders there and also emerging leaders. Also, congratulations to the St. Augustine Children's Choir, who had a very successful sounded music concert last Saturday at the South City High School Auditorium. Lastly, thank you to Dr. Aruna Chinakotla, an Assistant Physician in Chief at Kaiser Permanente, for being one of our guests at the Community Outreach last Sunday. She talked about the importance of healthcare directives, and based on the feedback that we got, I will invite her again to do the same for a bigger audience. A ton of thank you also to our City Manager, Sheriff Reynolds, Assistant City Manager, Rich Lee, Fire Chief Matt Samson, and Lieutenant Amy Serrioti for the support and assistance. Marie also did a lot of arrangements, so thank you, Marie. And I would like to request that our meeting be adjourned in memory of Manuel Valle. He died last Sunday, and he is the father of one of our treasured library staff here, John Valle. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We will adjourn on his, in his memory, absolutely. Councilmember Coleman?
Right. Thank you. I was excited to attend a couple exciting events over the past couple of weeks. The first was a groundbreaking at El Camino High School. They are starting construction on their new central kitchen to supply tasty and nutritious meals to all of our students and the entire school district. It's the central kitchen. The only thing is I wish they would have started earlier when I was in school. Next, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for Park Padell, which is, if you imagine pickleball and squash having a baby, would be paddle ball, right? And they have a location right here in South San Francisco, and it's a game of a lot of fun and definitely a good workout. So I encourage those here to maybe go to Park Padell and give it a try. And next, I want to close out by giving some comments about some of the events unfolding in Southern California over the past week and what they mean for us here in the Bay Area. Watching the news over the last few days, I have been absolutely horrified. I want to condemn in the strongest possible terms the recent actions by ICE in LA. These are not routine enforcement actions. They are not about public safety. They are about retaliation, intimidation, and instilling fear throughout our communities. What we are witnessing is a clear disregard for due process. People are being arrested without cause, detained without explanation, and denied access to basic legal protections. What we're seeing is ICE is not targeting threats. They are targeting workers and families, people who power California's economy every single day. California would not be the fourth-largest economy in the world without our immigrants, immigrants who work in our hospitals, our farms, our restaurants, our construction sites, and many of our other industries. And now, federal agents are raiding entire workplaces, restaurants, and even churches. They're arresting children as young as three years old. This is not justice, this is political violence. It's nothing short of domestic terrorism. And while this is happening in LA, it is a warning to every city in California, including ours. In anticipation for increased ICE actions in the Bay Area, I hope that our city staff can continue to do more work and to explore ways in which we can continue to safeguard and defend our immigrant communities. We need to make sure that we are able to verify or dispel false rumors about ICE activity so that no one in our community is living in unnecessary fear or panic. I would like to request that we do another round of Know Your Rights trainings for our community in multiple languages and successful formats. I know we have provided this in Spanish, but they are also targeting the Asian community as well. And we must also place a special focus on our city's small businesses. I have also talked to the mayor about this, as well as city staff. Our city's small businesses ensuring that they understand their rights and responsibilities if they are ever targeted by federal agents. We must be prepared. South San Francisco is a very inclusive city. Our communities deserve to feel safe, our families deserve to stay together, and no child should ever have to grow up in fear that their parent or they themselves could be taken away. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Flores. I was glad to hear, I was not able to attend the groundbreaking for the new central kitchen, and it is so good to hear that our school district is going to be providing tasty and nutritious meals at something I never was able to enjoy way back in the day when that cafeteria was brand-new. So I just wanted to report on two meetings that I went to over the last week. Yesterday, the Coma Creek Advisory Committee, which used to be in charge of Coma Creek and has now been supplanted by what's called One Shoreline. I wanted to bring this mainly to my colleagues' attention because there are some plans that are being put together, requests for proposals to enhance the creek, beginning mostly around the area of the Utah Bridge on either side, to create better capacity because our storms are going to come more intense and challenge a system that is, you know, virtually at its maximum during heavy rainfall. And I think that it's interesting to note that of all the storm, there are four zones, I guess, in San Mateo County that collect taxes. And so if you live in South San Francisco, part of your property tax bill goes into the Coma Creek project. So countywide, they collect about $7.9 million. The Coma Creek portion is 6.1. So it's monies that have accumulated to the point that it's about $45 million now. They're going to pay off a bond early because they don't anticipate needing it for another three to five years when they are going to be ready to break ground. So I'm hoping that someone on this council realizes the importance of keeping a warm body on, it's only an advisory group. We are not the decision-makers when it comes to what or how to spend the money, but you need to be at the table to make sure that our best interests are being taken care of. So I hope that somebody on this body, you know, in another year or so would be willing to step up and become a member of that advisory group. to step up and become a member of that advisory group. And then the other meeting was similar. It was BCDC, the Bay Conservation Development Commission in San Francisco, another body that is important that someone serve on in the near future. Senate Bill 272, which we've talked about before, which was Senator John Laird's bill, which resulted in the state stepping up and going to actually fund some of the plans for shoreline resilience. And BCDC is responsible for the initial proposals from cities and counties that it meets the standards that the state's looking for, and if you do, then they'll submit it on a first-come, first-served basis. And this is monies for the actual planning. So in the very near future, I guess I'm speaking to the city manager now, staff from BCDC is going to be contacting the different cities, and I'm not sure who our best contact person would be for that, but maybe initially the city manager. And the sooner we can step up, the more likely we'll be early in the queue, which would be a great help in planning for our future, especially out in our east-of-101 area that is, especially the southern part near the airport, is going to be the first to flood. So anyway, so that was, those were the meetings I attended the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, very important. I want to thank my colleagues on council. Every event that you have attended, either with me or represented the city, it really stands out for your leadership and also for an opportunity to give back to our residents and our community. I attended a lot of that, so I will save my time and focus on this. As your mayor, I want to take a moment to reaffirm a core value that defines who we are as a city: our unwavering commitment to dignity, to inclusion, and to the safety of every single member of our community, regardless of immigration status. In light of recent conversations across the region, I want to be clear: South San Francisco stands firmly with the principles of the California Values Act. If you are not familiar, please look it up, also known as Senate Bill 54. This landmark legislation that covers the entire state of California was enacted to ensure that no one in our state lives in fear of accessing public services, reporting crimes, or simply being part of the community they call home. It also limits the use of local and state resources for federal immigration enforcement, and it was designed to build trust, not barriers, between our residents and the institutions that serve them. Let me be clear: the South San Francisco Police Department is not actively conducting sweeps for suspected undocumented individuals or our own neighbors. We know that public safety is strongest when it is rooted in trust, when families feel safe sending their children to school, when workers feel secure commuting to their jobs, and when neighbors feel confident calling for help without fear of reprisal. That is when a city thrives. South San Francisco is a city of immigrants. South San Francisco is a city of immigrants. It is a city rich in diversity. And diversity is not just part of our identity. It's really our strength. And we will continue to uphold policies that reflect compassion, that reflect fairness, and the constitutional rights of all people. Cities like South San Francisco are on the front lines of public safety. Through our police department and resources, we are the ones maintaining peace, order, respect, and most importantly, the rule of law in our communities, not the federal government or the administration. Based on the principle of local control and what is best for our city, South San Francisco and the city council prioritizes how law enforcement resources are allocated. Our South San Francisco police are trained to address civil disturbances during protests and to do so constitutionally. South San Francisco law enforcement knows our communities. Many attended our local schools and have generations of families serving our city. They have relationships with our community and are held accountable to our communities. The continuing actions of the federal government, including deployment of the National Guard and Marine Corps in L.A., undermine ongoing efforts to strengthen our communities and build trust with our constituents. These actions are hurtful, targeted, and misaligned. We cannot normalize the use of military force for local law enforcement in our communities, in our schools, neighborhoods, and places of worship. We must ask ourselves, who benefits when troops are sent into working-class communities? Let me also express my gratitude to our police department and city staff, who have long operated with professionalism and integrity in alignment with these values. We are proud of the work they do every day to protect and serve all residents without exception. Most importantly, to our immigrant neighbors. As your immigrant mayor, who was born in El Salvador and came here at the age of six, not speaking a word of English, I want to say to you, you belong here. You are valued. We see you, we hear you, and we stand with you. And this city will always be a place where your rights are respected and your contributions are celebrated. South San Francisco, today and always, will continue to be a working-class city with diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and the voice of our immigrants will never be silenced. Please know also that as your mayor, I am deeply focused on all the policy and state legislative actions that are occurring, or even legislation that is being considered. Councilmember Coleman and I attended a press conference, emergency press conference this past Sunday morning with our congressman, denouncing the federal actions of the current administration on sending National Guard along with advocates, other city mayors, and elected officials from San Mateo and Santa Clara County. So we are not sitting on our hands. We're actively looking at ways that we can improve and come and be a source of help to our community. South San Francisco is represented, and we are working to ensure that we continue to share resources and assist our community through nonprofit partners and county services to our neighbors and community. I have chatted with our city manager, and we will continue to do trainings, including for our small businesses and others, so that they know how to respond and react, including scheduling a potential training coming up in the month of July that will focus, in partnership with our South San Francisco businesses, Chamber of Commerce, Burlingame Chamber of Commerce, as well as the mayor of San Bruno. We will continue to stay vigilant and engaged in all matters to keep our residents safe and protected. And I want to also mention this quickly in Spanish. Thank you, everyone.
Next item, please.
Public comment. I received no ecomments. There are 10 speakers.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, I want to just also read this statement into the record and for everyone listening and being with us tonight. The city acknowledges that members of the public have the right to be heard, but the city also wants to emphasize during public comments that we have a zero-tolerance policy for discriminatory and harassing conduct. The city denounces any hate speech that may be vocalized during public comments, and speakers making public comments are not expressing the views of the city. Let's proceed, please.
Our first speaker is Cory David.
To say that the last council meeting was a learning experience is an understatement. We discovered that after years of silence, council members are now speaking out in response to resident comments they don't like. I also need to point out that these comments seem to be exclusively defensive and give the council member the last word, where historically there was none. I thought this was a violation of the Brown Act, but thankfully, our city attorney was standing at the ready, well, more accurately, sitting, to explain how the council members were within their rights. This news is enthusiastically welcomed by resident commenters, who have been limited to one-way conversations with zero interaction. This Brown Act rule revelation will now help the council to achieve the transparency that Mr. Nicholas brought up. Let's put the new improved Brown Act to work tonight. Numerous crocodile tears were shed by our council with regard to the unusually high number of public record requests made to the city clerk's office. Residents find these PRRs necessary as they address activities our city officials are engaged in that are concerned with the community. I appreciate and sympathize with the burden placed on the city clerk's office, but it does not originate with the residents. It originates with a city government that is about as transparent as a concrete wall. Now's your chance to right the ship and at the same time save the city clerk's office from processing another PRR. In light of the staff report indicating tens of millions of dollars needed to retrofit the MSB, the council voted to indefinitely push the pause button. You won't hear me dispute the fiscal calamity South San Francisco is facing, but I well dispute the negligence of allowing a fully operational city facility that has served the community for decades without interruption to fall into a multimillion-dollar state of disrepair before its future was determined. I will ask you again, what party or parties are responsible for this blatant negligence so that they can answer to the community for their actions? Feel free to use the balance of my time, as we will patiently wait for your answer in the moment, as that is now allowed.
Have you concluded your comments?
I'm giving you the opportunity to respond.
Have you concluded your comments, though?
In 30 seconds. Your silence is noted.
Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Zach Cust.
Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Adiego, esteemed council members. My name is Zach Cust. I've been working for the city of South San Francisco for nine years, and I'm proud to work as a supervisor for the Parks Department. I'm also a member of the bargaining team with the Teamsters representing the mid-management unit. First, I'd like to thank the council for providing the framework for what has been a respectful and amicable negotiating process. I've always felt respected and valued in my time working for South City, and I know that this council has played a large part in that, so thank you. I'd like to encourage the council to authorize a slight increase in contract authority. We're very close to a deal and need just a little more to get us across the finish line. I can certainly understand and appreciate the city's financial anxieties, but ask you to understand that city staff also face financial worries in these uncertain times. Rising food costs, outrageous tariffs, increasing insurance and healthcare costs, and ever-increasing rents cause our members to worry about their ability to provide for our families. Again, I'd like to stress that we are very close to a fair deal, and I'm confident just a little more authority will allow us to finish our negotiations and get back to focusing our full attentions on serving the residents of this wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Felipe Donaire.
Thank you, city council, for giving me this time to speak. My name is Felipe Donaire. I'm the president of Local 829. I hear both Ask Me and the Teamster unions are close to an agreement. I'm hopeful that you will recognize all the hard work that the city workers do every day. I want to share with you, the cost of living has gone up in the Bay Area, and it's a very expensive place to live, saying that your city workers deserve good wages that keep up with those costs. By rewarding your workers, the city of South San Francisco will be a city that shows its appreciation of the workforce. Please do right by your workforce and give them what they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Caleb Moran.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is Caleb Moran, and I'm a South San Francisco resident in District 3, who has proudly served this city for the past 11 years as a senior parks maintenance worker. I've worked for the city for over a decade, and in that time, I've retired to maintain and improve the parks that so many residents rely on: family time, recreation, peace of mind, and community connection. Tonight, I'm speaking not only for myself, but on behalf of my Ask Me Union brothers and sisters, who have also dedicated themselves to the city. Like me, they take pride in their work, they serve with heart, and they're simply asking for the chance to continue doing so without being left behind. I don't just work here. I've chosen to build my life here. I've recently got married, and my wife and I are planning to raise our family right here in South San Francisco. That decision wasn't about geography, it wasn't about planting, it was about planting roots in a place that we believe in. But I have to be honest with you, it's becoming harder to build a life than when our wages haven't kept up with the cost of living. I've seen responsibilities increase, expectations rise, and the bar move higher, but our pay's been left behind. We're not asking for a handout, we're asking for fairness, for compensation that reflects the work that we do, the experience that we bring, and the challenges we face trying to live in the very city that we serve. We love what we do. We take pride in every field that we mow, every playground we maintain, and every safe, clean space we provide for this community. But if things don't change, we risk of losing not just hard workers, but the commitment and care that make public service what it is. So I'm asking if you would support our city employees, especially those of us who've served for over a decade, as an investment in our neighborhoods, in our public safety, and in our city's future. Thank you for your time, and thank you for considering what it means to truly value the people who help keep South San Francisco strong every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorraine Yin.
Good evening, council members, vice mayor, mayor. My name is Lorraine Yin. When I wrote this script a week ago, I had planned to discuss the effects of defunding the IMLS, but it would be ignorant if today I did not speak about the blatant violations of human rights that have culminated under the Trump administration. Councilmembers, today I am nervous. I'm not nervous about speaking in front of an audience, I'm nervous about not being heard. I'm nervous that the current Trump administration deems asylum seekers as terrorists, deems international students as spies, and deems the actions of the administration... and deems the actions of the administration to be the word of God. I'm nervous about the presence, and I'm nervous about our future. The Trump administration has successfully revived government-sponsored abuse. On June 4th, a nine-year-old child was detained by immigration authorities in Texas. On June 7th, ICE raided the graduation of a primarily Hispanic elementary school. Protesters north of us in SF have been met with extreme police hostility. Such an effort seems misplaced when US immigration laws make the legalization process notoriously difficult. Additionally, Trump declared that he will suspend visas for international students at Harvard and specifically aggressively revoke Chinese student visas. The official White House website proudly states such action restores merit-based opportunity while ignorantly ignoring the facade of meritocracy that has long been etched into our history. We are in a global crisis. Yes, there is a global lack of clean water, a global lack of food, but most dangerously and perhaps most shockingly, there is a global lack of empathy. The phrase "love thy neighbor" has been repeatedly uttered, yet "neighbor" does not have asterisks above it. It's not "love thy neighbor" unless they're Mexican. It's not "love thy neighbor" unless they're Chinese. Empathy is not exclusive, and it's certainly not discriminatory. So when we forget how to empathize with people, we forget how to be human. The Declaration of Independence opens with "we, the people." So we, the people, ask the city council to use your platforms for advocacy, to publicly support ongoing lawsuits and to build coalitions. We, the people, ask you, the city council, to listen, to hear us, to hear our words, our pleas, our sorrows, and so we, the people, shall not cease until such has been done. Thank you. May hope be with us all.
Thank you.
Brian Noche.
Good evening, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Adiego, council members, and my coworkers. My name is Brian Noche, and I'm an employee of this great city and a proud member of Teamsters 856 who is in coalition with our colleagues from the AFSMI bargaining unit. I genuinely appreciate the opportunities this city has given me and my family. However, I'm here tonight to talk about a critical challenge facing our dedicated staff. I'm speaking to you as an employee and a member of this community. Like you, I want what's best for my family and South San Francisco. However, the reality is that it's becoming increasingly difficult to both work and live here. I'm not here for personal gain. I'm here to support all city employees, especially those who earn low wages. There are approximately seventy job classifications from mid-management, confidential, and ASME bargaining units that pay a very low or very low income, according to the San Mateo County 2025 income limits. We have several full-time staff working forty, fifty, or even more hours a week who fall into low or very low-income brackets. This is especially true for our mid-management employees who are exempt from overtime pay. While some benefits help, the workload is immense, and the expectation for top-quality service is incredibly high. For instance, the special events we all enjoy come at a significant cost to these employees. They take on extra work, often evenings and weekends, sacrificing valuable time away from their families and personal lives. It's inconsistent to demand high-quality services from employees while denying them a living wage. It's time for honest discussions and a change in approach. Despite the immense challenges, the work continues to get done. We are committed to putting in the long hours, working weekends, and attending late-night meetings. While a fair contract for the next two years is essential, the challenges several of our employees face are far more fundamental and impact the long-term well-being of our dedicated staff. Please, immerse yourselves in the world of the employees who make this city what it is. We want to do the work and serve our community beyond your expectations. Addressing these issues now will benefit generations of employees and their families, ensuring a strong future for our city. I look forward to these conversations with you. Thank you for your time, and thank you to everyone who spoke here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tristan Kent.
Good evening, council members. As my brothers have said before on the Teamsters unit and the ASME unit, we are here asking for a fair contract. We know that you guys have done a lot of work in the past getting us closer to where we need to be, but as I said last time, we're only looking for a little bit more. I think currently, we are really close to a deal and getting something done before expiration. I encourage you to take a good look at what is going to be presented to you in closed session, and we're just asking for a little bit more movement. It would be greatly appreciated. I'm going to keep this short tonight and say thank you, and thanks, everybody else, for speaking on behalf of the negotiations.
Thank you.
Cynthia Markopolis.
At the last meeting, I mentioned Councilman Coleman's Assembly campaign was still active. To be accurate and factual as the data allows, I contacted the Secretary of State, and the status of your Assembly campaign is active. You did raise over $292,000 in your first run after nine months on our city council, and you do have an active campaign with the state assembly. In the Enterprise Journal dated February 2, 1981, "Moving Day Mirrors at South City Service Building It States." The facility contains a community room and adjoining room that will be used for a new senior center, and goes on for four paragraphs about the senior center. "In 2017, because the city failed to study the significant impacts of withdrawing the MSB Senior Center from service, the Planning Department, the executive staff members, and each city planning commissioner, as well as city council members Adiago, Gabarino, Matsumoto, Normandy, and Gupta certified documents under penalty of perjury, knowing full well you committed perjury." You certified under penalty of perjury, quote, "Accepting the dedication of the subject site does not create any new environmental impacts not analyzed in EIR and SEQA findings previously made by the city council, but it certainly did create new environmental impacts that were not analyzed." When you swore under penalty of perjury the project was not subject to a subsequent environmental impact review that was in direct violation of statutory requirements which are required by law to study the significant impacts of withdrawing the MSB from public service because of the senior center. You deceived us, you manipulated us, and you intentionally misled the public. Each of you on council who refused to remove the MSB from the housing element to right a wrong, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Adiago, council members Nagales, Coleman, and Nicholas, yes, each of you deceived and hurt the 30% senior population of our city when you took the people's property, the MSB Senior Center.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Catherine Alexander.
Hello, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Adiego, and council members. I am an employee of South San Francisco Public Library. I have worked there for six years. I am also a member of AFSMI. I, like many of my colleagues have stated before, I have also seen the rising cost of living, the rising rents, the rising prices at the grocery store. I would urge you to support city staff and go just that little bit further in negotiating that contract with AFSMI and with the Teamsters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Anthony Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Adiego, and council members. I'd like to start with some positive news. Again, my name is Anthony Walters with AFSMI, American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Local 829. I'd like to start with some positive news tonight. We recently received word that the legislature has recommended to include the VLF backfill as a one-time measure in this year's budget. So this provides $118 million in one-time general fund monies for local governments to backfill the vehicle license fee shortfall. And this was a major concern in our negotiations as it has a potential to negatively impact South San Francisco's budget. The legislature's improved budget is a result of cooperation between our labor council partners, our local elected officials, and community stakeholders that have consensus around budget fairness. We've compromised on major negotiation items, including healthcare affordability, and we've maintained a positive collaborative working relationship with our HR director, Leah Lockhart. Compromise on our remaining proposals for longevity, classification, compensation study, and our cost-of-living increases will provide stability for our community and retention of our working-class employees to provide essential services for our residents. I want to thank you all for your thoughtful leadership and for your compassion for working-class people. We understand the importance of dignity and respect for all people, and our union is your partner in doing this important work. Thank you very much for all of your integrity and dedication to public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. Item 3, motion to approve the minutes for the meetings of May 27, 2025, and May 28, 2025. Item 4, report regarding a resolution adopting a proposed list of projects for fiscal year 2025-26 funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Item 4A is the resolution. Item 5, report regarding resolution to approve on-call consulting service agreements with twenty selected consultants for on-call architectural, engineering, and other professional services in an amount not to exceed $3 million for each firm over a three-year term. Item 5A is the resolution. Item 6, report regarding a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an additional $1,000 in grant funding for fiscal year 2024-25 from the Quality Improvement Grant from Quality Council San Mateo County for the Big Lift Little Steps Preschool at the Jean Mullen Community Learning Center and amending the Parks and Recreation Department's fiscal year 2024-25 operating budget pursuant to budget amendment number 25.059. Item 6A is the resolution. Item 7, report regarding two resolutions authorizing the city manager to execute third amendments to the consulting services agreements with Franken Grossman Landscape Contractors, Inc., and with Gothic Landscaping, beginning July 1, 2025. Item 7A is the resolution. Item 7B is the resolution. Item 8, report regarding a resolution approving the city's investment policy for fiscal year 2025-26. Item 8A is the resolution.
Thank you very much. Are there any members who would like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that the city treasurer is in the audience, and we don't often see him at our council meetings. So if he'd like some time, I'd like to pull the item. But I don't mean to put him on the spot, but I guess I have.
Mr. City Treasurer, would you like to come up to the podium, please? And for the record, which item is that?
Eight.
Eight, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, Frank Risa, your city treasurer. Tonight, we've submitted our annual investment policy for the council to approve. We've only made a few changes this year on the policy. We've gone through, and the main items that we've changed is we've added in some wording under the investment policy to highlight that if we own an investment where the policy, you know, the policy is based on the fiscal year, if the policy changes and an investment we own is no longer eligible under the policy, we're asking that we not be forced to divest until maturity. And it's just adding in some technical language to make sure that the city isn't forced to lose money by having to divest in an investment that they currently own. Additionally, we've added in, under the investment types, municipal securities as a potential investment that the city can invest in, both for the state of California and the other remaining 49 states. So those are the major changes that we are requesting that the council approve this year. But as always, we look forward to any kind of input that the council would like to suggest on what you would like to see within our policy.
Thank you, Mr. City Treasurer.
That's great. Frank, I'd just like to thank you for taking a little bit of time because you were able to communicate to the community, not really just the city council. Not often that we're able to do that. Again, how much money are you responsible for?
Currently, the portfolio at the end of May was approximately $260 million within three different portfolios. The main portfolio or midterm portfolio is about $210 million.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Being no other items to be pulled, if I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a first, can I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Flores.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego.
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas.
Aye.
Councilmember Nagales.
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Public hearing. Item 9, report regarding a resolution amending Resolution 188-2023 authorizing the city of South San Francisco to submit a five-year plan amendment to the state of California to receive and administer the city's entitlement of permanent local housing allocation, PLHA funds, and to enter into all required agreements to receive PLHA funds.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and welcome Ms. Moreno.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Adia Moreno, and I am a management analyst in the Housing Division of the Economic and Community Development Department. This evening, staff is bringing forward a recommendation that supports the city's continued work to better serve our community by investing permanent local housing allocation funds and a broader range of housing-related services and programs that respond to local needs. The staff report before you respond to local needs. The staff report before you recommends city council adopt a resolution to amend Resolution 188-2023, which would authorize the city to submit a five-year plan amendment to the state of California for our PLHA funds. This amendment updates our existing plan to include additional eligible housing programs and activities that continue to align with PLHA goals. It also ensures we remain in compliance with the state's requirement that at least 40% of funds support affordable ownership workforce housing. The PLHA program was established by Senate Bill 2 in 2017 to provide a permanent funding source for affordable housing and homelessness prevention. In 2020, city council approved South San Francisco's original PLHA five-year plan, which was later accepted by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The city is eligible to receive up to $1.3 million in total funding over a five-year period. To date, the city has received approximately $557,000 for the first two years of the program. These funds have been committed to the pre-development of the Rotary Plaza Affordable Housing Project on Linden Avenue. In December 2023, city council adopted Resolution 188-2023, which amended the PLHA five-year plan to allocate all funds towards Activity 2 focused on supporting affordable housing development and preservation. Since then, staff has identified additional eligible uses that would allow us to reach more residents, particularly those facing urgent housing challenges or in need of assistance to remain in their homes. As a result, staff is proposing an amendment to the plan, which requires council approval prior to submission to HCD by June 30. For its year three allocation, the city has been awarded $372,849, and staff is recommending these funds be distributed across three programs. First, $223,709 to support operations at the Economic Advancement Center, which connects residents, especially those at risk at homelessness, with housing resources and assistance, employment support, and small business services. This qualifies under Activity 6, homelessness prevention. Second, $100,000 for the Minor Home Repair Program, which helps low-income and elderly homeowners make essential repairs that improve safety and accessibility. This helps meet the 40% ownership housing requirement and is eligible under Activity 2, pre-development, development, acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable rental and ownership housing. And lastly, $49,140 to reimburse the city for preserving two below-market-rate home ownership units, ensuring they remained affordable and were not sold at market rate. This also supports the 40% ownership housing requirement and is eligible under Activity 2. This amendment allows the city to better address our community's housing needs, maximize the use of PLHA funds, and stay in full compliance with state guidelines. Staff respectfully recommends city council adopt the resolution amending Resolution 188-2023 and authorize submission of the amended PLHA five-year plan to HCD, along with any required agreements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno, for the introduction and presentation. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like to better understand. This is the permanent local housing allocation, and the largest item of the three is for the Economic Advancement Center. So I certainly understand why helping people keep their homes in repair will keep them from being homeless at some point and preserving the properties that you mentioned. But can you expand upon what the Economic Advancement Center offers in regards to housing?
So the Economic Advancement Center offers, the way we describe, the Economic Advancement Center is a hub of resources. We have a lot of services there, including life moves. We have employment support and services to all community members, and we also provide food resources to community members. So anyone who is at risk or very low income can go in and apply for any of these services. Also, they do connect our staff a lot with YMCA or also El Concilio, which provide a lot of housing services.
It sounds like it's just another middleman in the process, and I'm not going to belabor my questions. I'm not interested in supporting these monies to be spent for that purpose. I really don't think it's in the spirit of what PLHA was designed for.
Thank you. Any other members of council with questions? Ms. Moreno, you mentioned, so the proposal is eligible under Activity 6 assisting persons who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. Can you expand on what Activity 6 is? Is that just what that is, or is there more to that?
Yeah, so with PLHA, there's a list of 10 different activities. As I mentioned, like Activity 2 can fall under the pre-development, development, acquisition, rehabilitation of rental and ownership housing. Activity 6 falls under the support and help of community members who are homeless or at risk of being homeless.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments? If not, do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And if there are no other comments or questions, can I have a motion to move forward with the resolution?
If I may read the resolution.
Please, go ahead.
Item 9A is the resolution.
Any, can I have a motion to approve? I will make that motion for Resolution 9A. Okay, I have a first, can I have a second? I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
No.
Councilmember Nogales?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Yes. A motion passes. Can I have a next item, please? Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
Administrative Business. Item 10, report regarding the city of South San Francisco operating budget for fiscal year 2025-26.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Henry and Director Chang.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Karen Chang, your finance director. So tonight, we present the proposed budget for fiscal year 25-26, which includes an update based on the feedback from the Budget Standing Committee on May 20. So I will start with a high-level introduction, and then I'll turn over to Greg, who will go over the detailed presentation with all of you. So the general fund is facing a $12 million deficit. We have taken steps to manage costs. We have included in the budget a 3% COLA and $8 million in vacancy saving. But the gap between the revenue and expenditures remain unsustainable without structural changes. So if the city receives the vehicle license fee shortfall reimbursement, the deficit will be reduced by 4.8 million. While that's promising, uncertainty remains. An ongoing labor negotiation could further increase the cost and widen the gap. Over the past few years, a $10 million in one-time upper money has fun, the funding has allowed us to maintain service, support residents, and stabilize operations during an unprecedented time. But those funds are now fully expanded. Meanwhile, we face continued pressure, rising staffing costs, increased service demand, and new operation costs tied to facilities like the soon-to-be-opened pool. There are bright spots, though. The voter-approved business license tax is generating new ongoing revenue, and that's reflected in this year's budget. But development-related permit revenue are declining, and the broader economy remains volatile. Our reserves remain healthy, but they are not a long-term solution. They offer short-term flexibility and resilience, but we must address the structural deficits to preserve them. Our goal is clear: stabilize city finances while protecting essential services. Staff remains committed to this effort. Later tonight, you will hear from our consultant on the revenue enhancement option that support a more sustainable future. With that, I'll turn over to Greg Henry, our financial services manager, to walk you through the key components of the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council, and community members. We're going to be going through the slides. There's 40-ish of them, but I think there's plenty of space for questions as we go. So can we advance to the next slide, please? So the general fund starting balance. So for the first part of the budget, what we want to do is take a look at what we think the year-end of the current fiscal year-end is going to look like. At mid-year, we thought that there was going to be a reduction of $6.9 million in general fund available reserves. Given some changes that we've observed in expenditures and revenues for this current fiscal year, we're reducing that draw down to $4.8 million, which means we expect that the year-end available fund balance will be $29 million. Next slide, please. For the budget, we have some citywide expense assumptions. These are for all funds, general fund, the sewer fund, all the different areas. We assumed a 3% COLA. Healthcare costs, last year we had a huge increase in our healthcare costs. This year, only Blue Cross Blue Shield changed at 4%. We have a $3.7 million increase in our unfunded actuarial liability, which is what we pay for prior benefits that were given to employees and is based also on how well PERS does with their investment portfolio. At mid-year, you might recall, we had a $2.2 million increase in our utilities. That carried forward into this budget, and then just overall, there's a 2 point, there was a 2.7% general inflation that we needed to bake into some expenses. Overall, across all the funds, we're seeing that revenues are not keeping up with our current expenditure growth. So for the proposed budget, again, this is across, this is in the general fund, we expect that revenues will be at $140.5 million, while expenses will be $152.5 million, which results in a deficit of $12 million. So for the changes, property tax is going up $6.7 million. This is in part taking into consideration the changes that we made at mid-year, where we accounted for some increased revenues. So we've carried those changes forward into this year's budget. So this is a large increase over last year's adopted budget, but not a large increase over last year's amended budget mid-year. Sales tax is projected to go down from the adopted budget. This, again, was something that we mentioned at mid-year. We had to adjust sales tax down at mid-year. This carries that forward. TOT is expected to go up slightly. This is based off of some conversations that we had with the conference center. Other taxes, that's where the business license tax lives. They're going up $2.3 million. Again, the majority of that is based off of the business license tax that the citizens adopted for the city of South San Francisco, and then franchise fees are left flat. The other change to revenue, we, overall, in licenses and permits, we have a reduction of $2.4 million. This is both based off of a changed understanding of the current fee schedule and a reduction on staff's expectations of what new building permits are going to be for the new fiscal year. Intergovernmental charges, those are grants, those are up 0.3 million. The other big change is this year, staff are not recommending a transfer from the Measure W Fund into the general fund. That's why there's a $3.2 million decrease in the transfers in. Overall, that's how we get to $140.5 million in total general fund revenue. On the expenditure side, salary and benefits, as we talked about, there's a 3% COLA baked into the proposed budget, as well as those changes in the PERS payments and the healthcare changes. Supplies and services are going up $2.9 million. Almost all of that is in the departmental requests that we'll get into the details of. Overall, that's an increase of $7.1 million, which is what brings us to $152.5 million. Okay, moving into the department requests. Just looking at each department broadly, we have city council with a slight adjustment, city treasurer also with a slight adjustment. Those are based off of changes in healthcare choices. We have an increase in the city manager's office. That's, that'll be explained in their departmental request. That's why they're going up significantly. I think that we'll go into the details of the departments. I think we should, the next slide? So for city attorney's office, we have a contract increase of $65,000. For the city manager's office, we have the, a request for $200,000 to deal with abandoned derelict vessels, a $100,000 request for the biannual community survey, and an upgrade of a position from an admin assistant 1 to an admin assistant 2. For community and economic development, this is where you're seeing the decrease in building fund permit revenue, expected to be $3.3 million, and then planning fees, which are a different phase in the development process, and so are not necessarily timed to be aligned with building fees. They're going up $350,000. On the expense side, there's the Construction Coordination Committee for $75,000, TDM and trip cap monitoring and compliance for $40,000, retail strategies for the ECR and community centers for 30. And then building permit plan check, that is a, that is a contract with a vendor to support building plan check because we expect revenue to go down. We're bringing the expected expense of that contract down. And then they're requesting to go to the JP Morgan Investment Conference this year for $50,000. Finally, there's the elimination of the part-time hourly position that was associated with the Promotorres program. That is, would be switched to a contract model wherein, if additional funds are found, the contract would be used. There's no contract in the actual budget. That's a reduction of a position for savings of $92,000. The finance department has a $20,000 request for a property tax consultant, ongoing. That is to help the city estimate future property tax revenue, review potential challenges to property tax, that sort of component. Fire department, fire permits are expected to go up $360,000. The ambulance transport program, where we refunded money, we're changing to a different program that's resulting in a reduction in the amount of revenue we're expecting. And then staff is bringing the program response for Cal OES and federal OES responses, when we're sending firefighters to other jurisdictions for long stays to support those efforts. Those are going up $400,000, and that's to bring it in line with what the five-year trend for that revenue has been. On the expense side, with the increase in permits, we're increasing the expected contract service. The, they're asking to replace the aging vehicle extraction equipment, other supplies and services for, and then equipment and lodging for the mutual aid. That's been an expense that we've had for as long as we've had that program. We're including it in the budget now so that they're not tight where they were. Altogether, that's $550,000 in increased expenses. And then there is an expense to reclass the hourly safety inspector to a full-time position, and then overtime for the mutual aid. So the revenue is going up, and then we're baking in, which we hadn't before, the overtime associated with that program. That expense would only be used in the case that fire staff are going to be reimbursed, so that, that expense is offset. All total, it's $640,000 increase net in expenses. On the HR side, we have $100,000 for two, two services. The one is for contract HR inspections and compensation studies for $50,000, and then recruitment costs for another $50,000. Additionally, the annual summer interns, these are budgeted in human resources, but the interns are citywide and support all the departments when they're here over the summer. All told together, it's $107,000. For the library, we're, we are including the ESL and AES grant. Those are grants that the city was awarded two years ago. This is the back half, the second year of both of those grants. On the expense side, the planned network is, has some increases that the library has to pay for. They're increasing some youth library program support, children's books, and then expenses associated with the grant. associated with the grant, as well as a request to reclass two hourly library pages into library assistants. Overall, the budgeted, that is an increase, so there's more revenue than expenditures there for $187,000. Parks and Recreation, we have expenses associated with the expansion of the aquatics program, so that would be increasing the amount of revenue expected because of Orange Memorial, the new pool that we'll be opening hopefully January of this year. We're bringing in, after reviewing their overall annual revenue, we're adjusting their revenue up $600,000. The department did a look over their revenues, and so they're going up off their baseline, $600,000. And then this year, because of the timing of the, and I forget what the, it's Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, that is a grant that has typically been included in the budget. This year, just due to timing issues, it'll come as a budget amendment when they're awarded that grant, and so that grant revenue is coming out. So then we have the expenses associated with the new aquatic center. We have some building maintenance requests, and vehicular gates and roll-up door maintenance for the police and fire stations, and then the Caltrans Plaza airspan lease. Additionally, for some positions, so for the new aquatic center, because it's so much more pool to monitor, they need more staff and online staff to be able to monitor that, as well as a part-time building maintenance custodian to maintain the facility, which, because it is so much bigger, will require more maintenance work, as well as the fun fill program, full of fun program, excuse me, which requires a program coordinator. And then there's a conversion from a part-maintenance worker hourly to a miscellaneous hourly in the Parks program. On the revenue side for police, there's an increase in dispatch services. That's their annual increase. There's a change in the alarm registration and fee fines. That's just based off of trend to bring the budget in line with what actuals are. The end of the county task force program, so that's a reduction of $114,000, and then a change in the OTS grant that reduces it $2,000, for a net change of about $23,000. On the expense side, there's an increase in recruitment support for $60,000 and a request for mental health services. This is highlighted because this is slightly different than what was brought to the subcommittee. This is an increase for a total of $110,000. And then the expense of the crisis intervention specialist, this position will be covered, part of it will be covered with opioid settlement funds for the first year, fiscal year '25, '26. And that disposition is to replace the existing contract that the police department has for this type of work. All told, this is an increase in expenses of almost $290,000. For Public Works, there is the elimination of the traffic signal maintenance fee from the budget. This fee had been recorded in another area and had already been, so it was being double counted in the existing budget, so we took it out. And then an increase in the grading and other public works permits fees for almost There's a request for a thermoplastic machine, which is for striping and putting down the markers for sidewalk, or for crosswalks and that sort of thing. An increase to upgrade a management analyst two to a program manager, and an increase to change a management analyst one to a management analyst two. Those expenses, because Public Works covers multiple funds, and currently we're only showing the general fund, that's why it shows such a slight increase or a decrease to be upgrading the positions. And you'll see when we get to the other funds where the expenses of those positions reside. So overall, this is an increase in revenue, or net revenue, of $148,000. For IT, they negotiated a new contract for cellular antenna at Miller Garage, so that's an increase of $100,000 into the general fund. So for non-general fund, we have the general plan maintenance fee. We've been collecting this fee. It hasn't been included in the budget before, so there's been some actual, this is not, you know, compared to actuals, this is not going to be a full increase of 2.5 million, but it is in the budget. Now, the commercial linkage impact fee, we typically don't include impact fees in our budget projections, but because we have an agreement with, to collect this fund, we've included it in the budget for this year. And we included an increase of $17,000 for the Housing Trust Fund, and then we have the rate increase for sewer fund included for $1.7 million. For non-general fund expenses, starting with supplies and services, we have the sculpture, we have a sculpture that's going to use the Art in Lou fund. In Public Works, we have $750,000 for the anaerobic digester cleaning. We have an increase across sewer, stormwater, and garbage for the uniform rental agreement, which is the method through which, thank you, method through which our Public Works Department staff receive their uniforms. We have some essential tools for the garage, power washing for the parking district, license plate readers for the parking district. The license plate readers will allow LAZ parking to more efficiently monitor the parking by not having to get out of their vehicles, just drive through the parking lot and see which vehicles are authorized to park there. And then Public Works in the Sewer Department is requesting $1.1 million for vehicle replacement. Parks and Rec has two cultural art positions, so those positions are funded through the Cultural Art in Lou Fund, which is not an impact fee fund, so that is what allows it to have staff. And then here's where the rest of the upgrades of the two positions for Public Works are recorded, and those expenses are spread between stormwater sewer, excuse me, garage parking Next slide. Thank you. IT had some requests this year. The first one is for just general computer equipment replacement. That's citywide. That's part of the normal program that they do. There's a big expense associated with the EOC video wall, but we're using PEG funds for that, which are the fees that we collect from the cable companies inside the city. Software increase of $436,000, so that is in part the new planning software that is going into the city. We use a separate fee for that. That's why it's a non-general fund. We have a fee specifically collected to pay for that. And this year, we have both because we're transitioning from one to the other. We're paying for both services for this year, which is part of why that's so particularly high. Additionally, all of the city software, you know, that we have a license for, Microsoft, everything else is going up slightly in price, and so there's an increase there as well. And then the city is changing its phone service process again, so as a result, we're double paying a little bit this year because we're paying for both while we transition. That's a part of the increase there. And then IT staff have overtime and standby pay. We needed to include that in the budget. This was in the mid-year as well as an expense. And then it's just, we wanted to include a note, these aren't increases, they're base numbers, but the stormwater fund remains severely strained and is currently being subsidized by both the general fund and the gas tax fund because we have serious mandates from the state to do work and an inability to raise the expense, the revenue that's associated with that fund. For some expenses, economic and community development typically includes these three elements in their annual budget request as part of the constraint. Being felt by the general fund did not include these expenses this time around. So finally, we get to, again, sort of the expected general fund budget, which was available balance in the general fund, which was $29 million. Because of the deficit, we'll have to use $12 million to close that gap, which results in an available fund balance of $17 million, which is a 41% reduction in the available fund balance. And so when we take all different reserves, so we have the general reserve, that's the 20% hold on, 20% of revenue that we hold as an operating reserve. We have the infrastructure reserve, the CalPERS stabilization reserve, and then also the general fund balance. We see $56.4 million in available cash. Can go to the next slide.
In this slide, we just want to show, we show about the projected reserve and undetonated fund balance like the trend for five years. And I just want to highlight this is just a long-term forecast. It serves as a roadmap and just offering a glimpse into the city's physical future based on what we know today. While it's not meant to be a precise prediction, it just provides a variable insight into the potential trends and outcome. And this projection is a planning tool that helps us identify risks early and take proactive steps to avoid more severe outcomes. Just emphasize here is just a signal, not certainty, that allow us maybe to take time to cause correct now in order to protect the city's long-term financial health and maintain essential service to our community. So with that, I just take a pause here and just want to see if there's any questions from the council.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate the overview. Let's go in order, so try to kind of stack up your questions by department for my colleagues so that we all bring up the department head at the same time and not have him go back and forth. So anyone that has questions, I'll take questions here, and then we'll do comments.
Sure, I'll go first. At the last city council meeting, I mentioned there were a couple things that I wanted to add to the budget because of the conversations that I've had with both Chief Sampson and Chief Campbell, especially after the recent tragedies that we had in the community. So I kind of wanted to kind of justify these adds because I did see the budget for it. Since police has a couple items here, let me ask Chief Campbell to come up here. And so for the mental health services, it's a $50,000 additional to our budget. Can you just kind of explain what that's going to entail in terms of services for our police officers?
Sure. First and foremost, it's extremely important that all of our public safety personnel are of sound mind and body when they come to work. They see society at its worst, day in and day out, whether it's domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault. They say when you start in public safety, you have an empty backpack. In each call you go to overtime, you throw a rock in that backpack. And if you don't empty and process what you're dealing with, you'll basically end a career too early. So we've done a good job of building our wellness and our mental health program, but there's two critical components that we're missing. And that is, one, access, 24/7 access to a culturally competent therapist. So if one of our public safety members are struggling, they could call somebody, talk to somebody, and help process that information. And then the second component is an annual check-in with a certified therapist so that the officers get 30 minutes a year to actually have a one-on-one sit-down with the culturally competent therapist. If they're struggling, get some advice, get some direction of how to process that information. I've been doing this for almost 28 years, and I've seen the challenges that mental health has on all of our personnel, and to include suicide, recent suicide in a neighboring jurisdiction. And I do not want to see that happen in South San Francisco, so I'd like to do everything we possibly can to help support our public safety members that are out there protecting this city.
And the idea is to share the services with fire. Is that correct? Is that the conversation?
Correct. Chief Sampson and I are working hand-in-hand to coordinate and develop the best things that we can provide for our personnel.
And then, just to piggyback on that in terms of the mental health services, so we've obviously have seen the benefit the crisis intervention specialists has had in terms of our community. And we've had a conversation about the cost of this, which is the $227,000. But that's actually a reduction, is what I understand. Can you just kind of go into that in terms of a little bit more?
Sure.
Or actually saving some money on this in the long run?
Yeah, our clinician has been through Star Vista for the past three-plus years. We've seen over time some challenges that Star Vista is having, both on the management and financial side. We've seen the extreme benefit that the clinician does provide to our community, and we did some research and found that if we created a city position for the clinician, we would save close to $60,000 to $70,000. Our quote for Star Vista this coming fiscal year is $280,000, so it's an automatic $65,000 reduction for this year.
This opioid settlement funds, is that something that's continuously funded that we can take from to fund the position?
I'll have Assistant City Manager Rich Lee jump in on that.
Because it depends on how much opioid you take.
Good evening, Rich Lee, your Assistant City Manager. To answer your question, it is for about the next eight to nine years. On average, it's about $72,000 per year that we're going to get, but it's not an infinite source of funding.
Okay. But at least for the eight, for the future, we have some funding for, okay. And then I think in the future, in July or August, you'll bring back information about the drone program in terms of another budget request, right? Why are we waiting until July, August?
We're, so as you all know, we started our drone program in January. We've seen benefits for police and fire on both sides, life-saving benefits, I believe. So there's some new technology that we hope to bring on to help bolster our program. It's called Drone as a First Responder, or DFR for short, and it's basically a platform that would be on three different roofs within the city, and our dispatch center could deploy a drone to the scene, oftentimes getting there before the officer and provide critical information to first responders before they even arrive on scene.
But we're waiting until July?
Yeah, we're, the staff report, we're looking at potential funding sources. We believe we found a non-general fund funding source, which is good news. And yeah, we'll bring you a full presentation and staff report in July or early August.
Great, thank you. Let me bring up Chief Sampson here, just for the one item from the fire that was added.
Sorry, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Just for efficiency. If anyone has questions for Chief, let's do it now. To my colleagues, any other questions for Chief?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think that we were at a little bit of a disadvantage when we had our budget subcommittee because after that, recently, the president of the Police Association came to our city council, and then there was a follow-up email that described the challenges that the department is having. That's something that wasn't shared in any manner at our subcommittee meeting. So we're sitting there unaware of the difficulties, the extreme nature of the difficulties with the department. And I think that, Mr. Mayor, we, you and me, have to go back to work and deal just with this. It's not enough to, at one of our recent meetings, I think the chief indicated that it takes $150,000 or more to bring an officer online, and then in kind of an offhand manner, he mentioned that some communities are spending $100,000 to recruit laterally because then you don't have to have them being trained for 12 to 18 months. I don't know what we're waiting for. It sounds to me like there's an automatic advantage there. So I'd like, if we could have some time to sit down with the department and understand what the battle plan is to get us out of what is an unsatisfactory situation.
Absolutely, yes. Very, very good. Thank you for bringing that up, yes. All right, thank you, Chief. Chief Sampson, if you want to come up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really quickly, there's the replacing aging vehicle extraction equipment, that's the $41,000. My understanding that is the Jaws of Life, which is the battery operated. I'm trying to understand what, you and I had a conversation, how important it is. Can you explain why we need it right now in terms of the budget as well?
Absolutely. Good evening, Matt Sampson, your Fire Chief. So currently, the phrase Jaws of Life is the, is the catchphrase for extrication equipment that are used to pry open doors post-vehicle accidents, lift pretty heavy objects when building collapses. And the department operates three sets of those. One on our specialized urban search and rescue vehicle up at Station 65. And then two on the Quint companies up at Station 62. They're currently gas-powered machines. They have quite a bit of extra equipment. They have some limitations based on the, the way we actually run them. And where we're going into the future is everything is battery-operated. And the last time we had these pieces of equipment replaced was in 2009 via federal grant. We do believe that the third set that we have is eligible for a federal grant based on the fact it's on a specialized vehicle. So we were hoping for two, but with the currency of the budget, we reduced it down to one. But we did look and we were able to start identifying some potential funding for a second source that would also not be general fund. And we hope to come back and find the council with a report on what that funding would be and then a request for that.
Great, thank you. And I wanted to thank staff for acting so quickly and seeing how we can bring this into the budget. So I'll stop there on fire.
Anyone have questions for Chief Sampson?
A quick question. So the, the cost, the expense for equipment and lodging for mutual aid, is that also able to be reimbursed through mutual aid costs?
Correct. So the current mutual aid system, when we look for reimbursement, we have an administrative rate that's applied to any dollar we spend. And currently, it's 20 cents on the dollar and we hope to continue at this next summer. So what we see is from that administrative rate, we would use to offset the funds that we're requesting in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So that means to say the net zero?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
The, the last one I had, I just, it kind of just popped at me and I made, it was the $170,000 for the holiday decorations?
Thank you, but you're off the.
Unless you, you have some comments about that. I'm going to look at the city manager.
HCD or?
HCD.
City manager.
It seems like we've kind of, the budget's kind of grown over the years. I remember being on the committee, I don't remember being $170,000.
This is a reduction.
It's a reduction?
$170,000, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. That kind of scared me for a second.
It's actually taking out.
Okay. Thank you very much, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
We are, yes, let's do city manager for now. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
The city manager, I have been having a robust back-and-forth about a plan. It's not, it's not an expansion of positions, but it's a filling of a position that is kind of at the top end. So I have expressed to Sharon my concerns about filling a deputy city manager position at this point. And I'm, you know, the amount of money is, would be in excess of $330,000, $40,000 with benefits. And so it makes the top end even a little more heavy. Not that there's, there's certainly plenty of work to do, but Sharon offered a, a pretty detailed explanation this afternoon. We were at it again. And I thought that the rest of the council should hear this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adiego. I did jot down a few notes after the conversation that I had with the Vice Mayor this afternoon and let me share them with you. So first, from a cost perspective, I wanted to make the point that in the last two years, the city manager's office has basically reduced our budget by almost $1 million. So in '23, '24, our budget was 4.9 million. And by '24, '25, we were down to 3.9. And the way we did this was we downgraded one of the deputy city managers. This was formerly the director of communications to the manager. We did not fill one of the management analyst positions, which was Tamiko Huey's position. And we held vacant the administrative one position that we had in the front office. And then we also ended a contract with our federal lobbyist, which was, I think, $100,000. So in all, we did reduce. So I just want to make the point that I, of all the departments, I try to set an example if I'm asking these folks to go without new staff, that we try to set a good example. The other point that I wanted to make is that this is a vacancy and it is in the budget. So we're not asking for a new budget or a new position. And the other point that I would make is grant searching and grant reporting is, would be one of the primary functions of this position. And I think it will more than make up its salary in the grant revenue that it generates. Just, just quickly, a couple of functions of this position. As I mentioned, we have this, this position and it'll depend on the talents. If, if we're successful and we're able to complete our recruitment, it'll depend on the talents of the person. If I get somebody who's wildly graded finance or sustainability, we may adjust these duties a little bit. But in general, as I mentioned, researching grants and coordinating grant monitoring and reporting, which has gotten to be very sophisticated, especially for federal money. The DCM, I'll refer to it as the Deputy City Manager as the DCM, has been our sustainability lead. So this is, we heard earlier about trying to collaborate on regional sea level rise, electrification and reach codes. For example, our, our prior DCM worked on the polystyrene ordinance. So all of the sustainability initiatives. It's our legislative lead. So this is the liaison with our state lobbyist and advocate in terms of state and federal legislation and local legislation. This position follows what the school board is doing in the Harbor District and I, that's part of that liaison function that they have. And I would like to add, I think this person, I'm hopeful, can take more of a business manager role. And when I say that, we do need to do an analysis of our city properties. How can we increase the revenue that we're earning on those properties? Monitor leases and then continuing to lead the East of 101 CFD. And as Vice Mayor reminded me, we may not, we may, we have to time that carefully. We may not leap right into that, but we have invested a lot in, in that effort. Just a couple more here. Looking at franchise agreements is something this person could do. And if you'll remember Christina, during COVID, the emergency response coordination when we have a big emergency. And then finally, I want to mention continuity and succession planning. So I hear often about what are you doing for succession planning at the executive level? And this is kind of a stepping stone for a department head to become a DCM, ACM, city manager and filling him in on all that. And it's very popular with the employees to have this promotional opportunity because between department head and ACM is a big leap. So there's a step there for our internal folks. We, we have already done a recruitment for this position and, and I, we have 50 highly-qualified applicants. This is a great time to be recruiting for a position like this. And I don't mean to benefit from other people's pain, but there are a lot of federal and San Francisco, Oakland employees who have lost their jobs. And so they're some really great applicants. So those are my reasons why I'm really hoping that, that we don't eliminate this position at this time.
So you can see I got an education. I was outmaneuvered, outflanked, and I raised the white flag earlier today. But I will tell you that I think what aggravated me the most was the position we found us, ourselves in courtesy of the last city manager. Because, and I need to say this out loud, those positions were created as, as gifts to the two people that were maybe most loyal to the city manager. And on his exit, he decided to give them, you know, something that would enhance their careers. And it certainly did because the most recent one became an assistant city manager and the one prior, who left pretty close after, became an assistant city manager in a very small town, Saratoga. So it worked out well for them and it was somewhat expensive for South San Francisco. I will correct the city manager that many of the items that she mentioned, that the deputy city manager was taking care of, she wasn't always the deputy city manager when she was taking care of those items. But I think that, that the city manager has offered more than an adequate rebuke to my position and, and I, I take that good-naturedly. And, but this is the kind of back-and-forth, give-and-take that we all need to do throughout the organization. And I'm going to make my statement now. The next item has to do with how we're going to enhance the revenue. If we don't make any sincere efforts on cutting something from the budget, we're less likely to prevail with the public. Because the general feeling, now we may be 100% solid on the fact that every position is needed, but we damn well better prove that because there's a lot of, a lot of attitude in the general public that government is fat, sometimes lazy, and not so efficient and not so productive. So we better get our hands dirty and get into the different departments to figure out if we can make cuts. And if not, let's get an explanation like this that we can share with the public. That was my whole point of challenging her.
Thank you. No, and I appreciate that because we do have to be detailed as part of the subcommittee, which I'm now seeing it here. I want to thank Parks and Rec Director Greg Mediani for putting more information there on our new aquatic center. Because I didn't understand, obviously, opening up a new center requires more staff. I didn't understand what that more meant. I could see it now detailed. To your point, Vice Mayor, I also spoke with the city manager and she also alluded CFD. I don't know if you mentioned that, our community facilities district, how vital that is, important and, and to be able to mobilize quickly after, I believe, the state legislator, legislation approves it this summer. So that's another very important component that we need to ensure that has coverage as well. Any other questions for city manager or anyone under her team there? All right, go ahead.
Since you brought up the position in terms of lobbying in the state legislature, why do we have a lobbyist then?
Well, the DCM is the liaison.
Well, no, no, we're talking, I'm talking about our state lobbyists.
Well, they actually are in Sacramento. So for example, and are following all the legislation that the weekly updates that I provide you are coming from Sacramento.
No, I understand, but what you're saying for this position is, it seems duplicative of what we're asking our lobbyist to do.
It's, again, it's the liaison with our lobbyist. It's just one small part of what they do, which is, and the other thing that they provide is grant opportunities. So.
Which is what the, what the person that you're going to hire is going to be doing.
Right, but so Townsend will identify 15 grant opportunities and the DCM will look through them and say, oh, this fire was, we're trying to do a fire station. This one might work for fire. These are things that the lobbyist wouldn't necessarily know. They just give you the list of grants. So it's, it's a lot of going to the departments going, oh, I see something here that might work for police. Could you, could you guys use this? So, and also writing the grant. This is something Townsend will help us, but it's, it's very collaborative. It takes a lot of staff work, a lot of details and statistics. And then the lobbyist may have done a similar grant for another city and they can help you with some tips, but it's very collaborative.
And more importantly, it's our local regional bodies. To you, councilmember, it's your work on the TA, grants that come through to, from SAMTRANs that come through from CCAG. I remember that role would prepare speaking points and alert us when items on those agendas were of city concern as well.
Yeah, and it's important also for someone in the city manager's office to oversee this. Like, you know, the lobbyists will be like your contractors. So that person will be in charge of them, making sure that they're doing their job and that our job on our side is also being done.
No, I don't have a problem with the person here. I guess my concern was, I think we all remember when we hired our federal lobbyist and how that really was kind of a waste of money altogether.
That was a previous city manager also.
Yeah, I will tell you, we are definitely earning every single bit of it, having been there with them in Sacramento and seeing how they are literally lobbying. In fact, I think a lot of the vehicle license fee success, I will, I will say, it's because they were talking in the hallways, in the swing space, in various locations up in Sacramento too.
I will also say DC is a whole different beast than Sacramento. I think things can actually happen in Sacramento. Good things.
Okay, I guess, are you good with your questions? Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Do you want to pick up on any other questions?
The JP Morgan conference, there was a reference to it. Mr. Henry, you said $50,000 to attend, but my understanding was, and I guess this, is this ECD?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. So my understanding was we were going to actively try to abscond with people from the conference, drag them down to South City and show them how wonderful our town is? Was that part of the 50,000?
The idea was that we would try and set up some tours, education about South San Francisco. It's a pretty big collection of a couple of different groups, cutting-edge scientists and venture capitalists.
People with money.
People with money. And so at, you know, not to be too crude, we were trying to insert ourselves in, show off South San Francisco, we're so close to San Francisco where they host us and see if that nets, you know, bigger, greater, more tangible results than some of the other economic development outreach we do to build up the life science community.
Yeah, I think that's overdue. It amazes me when I talk to people from, from San Francisco, they have no idea what's just 11 miles down the road. And I think that we, we need to be showcasing that and sharing our success and our potential. The BioConference is basically, we lightened the load of the BioConference to be able to fund this. And the BioConference went down by this 50,000 and is now how much? Is it 100? Is that what?
No, we're taking off the 100, right?
The intention was really to slim that down so perhaps it's one person in the California pavilion or in the booth next year in San Diego, but that, we really aren't spending the typical budget.
So it's, it's equal to this, then it's another 50,000 for the Bio and 50,000 for the JP Morgan?
So sorry, there was a reduction of $100,000 on the JP Morgan and so this would, together it would be a savings of $50,000.
Typically, we budget about 150,000 for life, for the BioConference. We're reducing it by 100 and really focusing on JP Morgan. We think with salary savings, existing budget, if we want to have a presence at Bio, we might be able to do a very slimmed-down presence, but it will not be sort of.
Well, I think next year's only San Diego. We can drive, right?
We can drive, in a van, together.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, Councilmember Coleman. Any questions or comments? Or, yeah. That will move on to Councilmember Nicholas.
Yeah, general comments. I really like the assumptions were very clear and I think they are, they make a lot of sense. It's not too conservative nor, they're just actually realistic for the revenue assumptions. Now, my question is, for the services and supplies, you know, we have impact fees that, because, you know, impact for newer residents and all the developments that we have here. How do you allot which one goes from the general, that comes out of the general fund? And how do you allot which comes out of the impact fees?
So normally, the impact fee is used for just buying stuff. It cannot be used for kind of ongoing operating services.
So like, for example, the supplies for the library, can they be taken out of the impact fee?
Not the ongoing, but if it's a one-time and is for the expansion of the services because the impact is like to eliminate the impact to the community, right? So if it has like, because of the growth of the size of the, like, you want to expand the program or that you need a certain equipment that was not exist now?
Right, but like, for example, the supplies that are coming, you know, from the, that are going to be bought by the library, can they be taken out from the impact fee?
I do not believe so. So that's an operating supply. So for example, with the park fees, if we're going to build a new park or expand the, what people can do in the park so more people can be accommodated, that's an eligible expenditure, but I couldn't pay park maintenance staff or buy supplies or fertilizer?
Well, I can understand that, but say, for example, new books. I thought I saw something like that from the library. Yeah, so I'm thinking that that could be taken out from the impact fee because if we have a bigger leadership, so that, that was.
Is it, has to be associated with that department? Like if we had a library impact fee?
We, we do have a small, they do have a library fee, but it's for improvement of the facility when they, when that time comes. If, if they needed to get a new book machine to read more books, I think that might be. And we have to check very carefully what's eligible. It looks like Sky has a better understanding of this.
Of course, of course. No, I just want to, you know.
It's a good point, very good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, this is the, a limitation that's in the Mitigation Fee Act, which is a provision of state law that, that governs the imposition of fees on new development. Generally, although there are some nuances to this, the fees have to go to pay for physical infrastructure that is necessitated by demands on services that are generated by new development. So to that end, a book, something to sort books, yes, it's a piece of physical infrastructure. Reading materials, not, a little bit of a gray area. And if the fee wasn't calculated to pay for it, then, then that would be a secondary reason that we would not be able to then allocate funds from the fee to pay for. allocate funds from the fee to pay for those. So it's just, it's a combination of state law and how the fees were constructed.
Thanks. And I just want to be reassured, you know, I heard that, you know, from Mr. Henry's explanation, they were like, we're paying for this software because we have a new software. And so I just want to make sure that the cut-over plan was really tight so that we won't be paying to subscriptions. I just want to be reassured. Was the cut-over plan really planned out?
I will let IT directors address this one.
Tony Brer with IT Director. Yeah, so both projects at, the permanent project that we're currently underway with, we definitely have a plan set out. It's a 12 to 14-month project, and we have milestones that we have to meet every month. And so far, you know, we are meeting those milestones. When we go to the ERP projects, it could be similar. It's going to be an 18-month project. We're going to have to meet those milestones to, you know.
And how many months are those, like, overlapping for the cut-over?
It'll be, it's like, so the annual fee is obviously 12 months, and so the overlap would be, you know, five months or so.
Five months.
So, yeah. But for that first year, though, we're paying both subscriptions, though, right? So we're going to try to meet that 12-month deadline so we don't have to go over this for the second year.
Just something to note is, there will be a bit of redundancy because of the complexity of it. So it's not like you just flip the switch, oh, we're done with this one, start that one, you know, so there has to be a bit of overlap.
Well, I do understand, because I do this a lot for transitions and migrations of data. So I just want to make sure that that cut-over, you know, when we do that, is just the minimum amount.
Correct, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Any other comments or questions?
I have one other item, because I feel personally responsible for that $200,000 that's being set aside for abandoned and derelict vehicles. So I wanted to encourage city staff, I'm looking at Rich Lee, because I think he's my point person on this. We have a mooring ordinance in place that we've talked about. There's a next phase before, okay, when we finish dragging seven or eight boats out of the water and writing a check for $108,000, that's the most expensive manner in which to deal with abandoned vessels. Once they sink, they're horribly expensive to get out of the water and dispose of. So we have, at that time, I think we had five in the waterway, two tied together and three tied together. And recently, when I went out to the waterway, I wasn't surprised, but now there are seven. And sometimes these boats are tied together for their own safety because they're not all that seaworthy. So now we have two, three, and two. And the next phase is to actually identify boats that have been here for longer than 72 hours and ask them to depart South San Francisco waters. So before something sinks, we need to move into the next phase, ask them to leave. If they can't get their craft out and it's abandoned, it's much less expensive to get it out of the water while it will float to the ramp. Yeah, so I'm just encouraging Rich to move ahead before we have another sinking.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, one program that the city is not able to participate in, but the San Mateo County Harbor District is, the same grant which I've mentioned previously, the first acronym, first initial of that acronym is the Surrender Vessel Program. The Harbor District does participate in the program. You may recall the three vessels that burned in November of '23. One of those vessels, we were able to get the registered owner to sign over the vessel to the Harbor District for, they surrendered it to them. In the scenario that you've outlined, where an inhabitant of a vessel, perhaps they get the message, but they abandon it, the best scenario in that case would be, one, for them to leave, but two, if not, then they would surrender the vessel to the Harbor District. And that would be a much easier pathway than for us to go down further enforcement.
However, you can get them out of the water, Rich, before they sink.
All right, anyone else with questions or comments? All right, I, you know, as your mayor and also as member of the Budget Subcommittee, I want to thank everyone for really working together, of course, at the leadership of our city manager and our finance team as well. These are really, you know, dire financial times and financial challenges. I'm a realist, but I also like to say that the glass is half-full. I don't think this will remain forever in the future of South San Francisco. Our focus is on maintaining key services and investing on our community's future. You see the pool, you see the parks, you see a lot of continuation of community, quality of life improvement services. Madam City Manager, you said that you had asked different departments to kind of scale down. I want you to reassure the community, though, that that's not public safety. We're not taking police or fire off or reduction in that, because sometimes that gets interpreted as that. So I want to make sure that you confirm that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no required reduction, but I will be transparent, as Vice Mayor Adiego pointed out, we do have some vacancies, which, you know, through attrition and retirement and other reasons. So we do need to fill those, and they are working on that, but we did not force any reductions in force. And I would also say, I keep a close eye on our response time, and our response time remains very good, which doesn't mean that the staff isn't, you know, stretched quite a bit to maintain those response times. And as we've heard, and I do really appreciate that, folks are working really hard, but to answer your question, no, we didn't make any cuts or reductions, but we're not where we want to be in terms of having all our positions filled.
Thank you. I just want to underscore that, because sometimes that gets interpreted that way around in the community. I also want to take this opportunity, it's not fully confirmed yet, but I do want to thank our state legislators, Senator Scott Wiener, Senator Josh Becker, Assembly Member Catherine Stephanie, Assembly Member Diane Pappin, for their strong work in supporting our county's efforts, and I encourage, and encouraging continuing efforts to secure reimbursement of the vehicle license fee funds from the state of California. That is instrumental. And City Manager, what would that bring the $12, or $12 million deficit down to?
I believe it's 4.8 is what we would stand to get. So let's say five from 12, it would bring it down to seven, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So through their advocacy, multiple stakeholders up in Sacramento, this is very instrumental for our outlook. And also wanted to say, you know, while deficit spending is a challenge, it's also important to recognize, and I'm not making excuses, but there are other cities in San Mateo County that are also facing the same financial pressures. This really presents us with an opportunity, like the Vice Mayor said, to get down in the weeds and prioritize what matters the most and continue to build a strong resilience out of San Francisco. So thank you to the staff, appreciate the information. This is only an informational item here. We will be approving it at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item, please.
Report regarding options for revenue enhancement, item 11.
Good evening, Mayor Eddie, Vice Mayor Adiego, members of the council. Rich Lee, your Assistant City Manager, just have some very brief introductory remarks before I invite the consultant to make their presentation. This is a follow-up based on the council's 2526 action plan. You may recall the five major focus areas of the action plan. This is related to the modern and sustainable organization and with the key strategy of ensuring financial sustainability. And the Finance Director mentioned Measure W, which was overwhelmingly passed by South San Francisco voters in November of 2024. That helps, but it does not solve the city's general fund structural deficit. So the city manager's office issued an RFP to identify revenue enhancement consultants to assist the city in this effort. We received several competitive bids. We identified Urban Futures Incorporated as the most qualified firm to assist us. We've met with them every week for the past six weeks to ultimately, one, present this to the Budget Standing Committee on May 20th, and based on the feedback from that committee, the iteration is before you this evening. So with that, I'm going to welcome our representative from Urban Futures, Wing C. Fox.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I believe my colleague Jim Morris is also joining us via Zoom.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
So we are here this evening to discuss four revenue measures, the analysis that we have provided. When we look at revenue enhancement measures, we evaluate them against these four basic considerations. One is adequacy and certainty. So will the measure sustainably generate the anticipated or projected or needed revenue generation with low volatility and growth opportunity in the future? In this case, we looked at targeting 14 million. As you saw in the prior presentation, current projections are 12 million. This gives you a little bit of room cushion there for this exercise. Two is equity and competitiveness. So is there an appropriate distribution of tax burden? And are you going to be at a competitive tax rate compared to neighboring communities? Three is transparency and voter approval. Is it a clear structure, clear tax structure? And what is the likelihood of voter approval? And finally, simplicity, is there an ease of administration and implementation of the revenue measure? I do want to emphasize that this evening, this presentation's goal is not to decide on what measure to put on the ballot. It is simply to drive towards the next step, to recommend selecting two revenue measures to further evaluate in a scientific survey. And it doesn't mean that you can't come back to the other two. If survey comes back with the top two or top one selection, and survey comes back, there isn't voter support, you can go back to the others and evaluate those later on. So this first revenue measure, the transaction and use tax, is probably the one that is most familiar to your community, given the passage of Measure W. This is a transactions and use tax, which is based on point of delivery and not use, not point of sale. And there is this very strong, as you can see, strong approval rates for this TUT. It's a majority voter approval, although it does require a supermajority of council to put on the measure under state law. So the table to the right, you can see the breakdown for the city's total tax rate, which includes the state sales tax, Bradley Burns, and then you can see the Measure W, the half-cent sales tax. So just to dig a little bit deeper, we thought it would be helpful to include this slide as a new slide from the committee meeting. And these are some ways that the tax burden is more equitably or broadly distributed to mitigate any regressive nature of this tax. One, necessities of life are excluded from the tax. So as you can see, there's about 50% of total sales tax collected are exempt. So this does drive towards more discretionary goods being taxed versus, again, those necessities of life, which include food, groceries, and medicines. Also, South San Francisco is quite unique in that 37% of the transaction and use tax is business-to-business, as you can see on the graph to the right. That 37% is quite significant. Another interesting fact about South San Francisco is that a significant portion of sales tax does come from visitors and non-residents. So there's a greater tax base than the South San Francisco residents paying this sales tax. This is data that is a sampling. Just to give you an example, it's a little bit difficult to see from the back probably the different coloration between the darker blue and the lighter blue. The darker blue is a bottom number, which represents South San Francisco residents, just based on location, walking into Costco or Safeway or Trader Joe's versus non-South San Francisco going into these stores. So you can see, for example, the Costco on El Camino, which is a very popular Costco, about 47% of visitors to that Costco are from San Francisco compared to 12% of South San Francisco residents walking into that particular Costco.
Is this just one Costco that you?
This one has all the Costcos, and what I just gave you was just an example of the El Camino one, and more specifically, the 47% versus 12%. But if you look at the ratio of the bottom number to the total, that gets you to the South San Francisco versus others walking into those stores.
Also unique, a city that has three Costcos, too.
It's wonderful. I often visit several of those Costcos.
So question in methodology, so you went to, I guess, some of these locations and you asked, I don't know, 100 people, what city do you live in? And this is where you kind of got that from, or just question on methodology?
So we have location-based AI technology at our hands, and we, these are the top half dozen locations in South San Francisco. So we took the data, aggregated it, compared it from residents that are, their home is based in South San Francisco versus home that is based outside of South San Francisco.
So if I could just expand on that a little bit, the Placer AI that we've mentioned before, which we purchased and many of the departments use it, it's aggregated by phone, cell phone. So it's, it is, you know, it can count up how many people, based on their cell phones, are visiting a site and not where they're coming from and where they're going. So we use it, the Parks Department uses it to see how much activity they have in the parks. We've used it at LPR, and it's pretty amazing to see just how many people are visiting these locations. So I just thought, it's really cool.
Follow-up question, if I may. What about online purchases? So if an individual who lives in South City purchases something on Amazon, we get the sales tax correct?
This is the transactions and use tax, so based on use, location of use.
Location of use. What percentage of our current TUTs are from online purchases in residential areas? I think that's the question.
So I think that information, we can certainly share the, record the reports that we get from the, our sales tax advisor, that can shed some light on that. Not that we have that on hand, but we can certainly get that to council.
Great, thank you. And the purpose of that question is, you know, this is, this graph kind of shows that when it's, I guess, storefront retail, a lot of that sales tax is paid by residents who are not from South City. But I just want to capture that, a lot of South City residents do pay another form of, well, sales tax, but from online purchases, which is growing more and more these days.
So San Francisco's current tax, sales tax rate is capped at 9.875%, and your Measure W is included in that, as I mentioned before. So because you are capped out, you need to seek special legislature, legislation from state legislature. And just to also caveat that the County Transportation Authority is considering extending and possibly adding quarter cent through special legislation as well. If both were to pass, they're looking at a 10.625% sales tax rate. If we're looking at just a South San Francisco addition of a half-cent sales tax, which is what we estimate would be needed to generate approximately 14 million in revenue, the city would be at a 10.375% sales tax rate. So as you can see to the right in the table, how you would compare, the South San Francisco would be higher than anyone else in San Mateo or Santa Clara County. Across the bay, you do find equivalent rates. Having said that, marginal differentiation in sales tax rate doesn't significantly affect customer behavior.
I know that for, I read on the paper that San Mateo is considering something. Do you know any other cities? Do you guys have any information of any other cities that potentially would also require legislative approval that are considering?
We do know of San Mateo, we are doing some work with them. I don't know, Rich, if you have any other insight on other cities?
Okay, but we wouldn't be the only ones, I guess is my point. Likely not.
Yes, but San Mateo is below the cap, right? So they're at 9.625%. So unless they were seeking above what they.
I believe they are, okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I add the tax question? I think you know where to go with this in terms of the regional measure, the transportation regional measure. That's not including this, because Measure A is separate, so.
It is counted in the South San Francisco rate that.
That 9.875 does include the regional transportation measure.
The one that's going to come up in '26 is what I'm talking about. Even though we don't have, we don't know what their rate's going to be.
Right. So that would, that's also going to require special legislation.
Right, but that's an add-on to what potentially?
Yes, that is.
So this, depending on what, if, because I think the TA is deciding either to extend Measure A or go with the regional measure, this 10.625 is just kind of hypothetical at the moment right now.
Yes. I think if the, if the council wanted to move forward and you want it, and you were able to get the special legislation and you proposed a half percent and voters approved it, you'd be at 10.375. The additional amount for the county is speculative. I think that we, you know, there's lots of conversation about the county regional measure, what might happen. So the ultimate rate for South San Francisco residents could be higher, but, you know, based on your own choices, you'd know that it would go to 10.375 in that hypothetical.
All right, thank you.
Just a summary of the pros and cons and that we just discussed in the prior slides. TUTs do have strong voter approval. They have, you know, the estimated annual revenues is at or above our targeted 14 million with that half cent increase in sales tax. And again, as we discussed, in terms of the tax burden being spread across businesses, residents, as well as visitors. There is some volatility with this revenue stream, as we all know, subject to overall economic trends. Other considerations are this special legislation, pursuing the special legislation. And as we just discussed, the County Transportation Agency potentially also pursuing special legislation. Next revenue measure we analyzed is a parcel tax. This is not an ad valorem property tax, which is based on assessed value of the property. This is a per parcel based tax. So for example, each parcel could get an amount that can be fixed or flat a tax for that parcel. Can't be arbitrary, or it must be based on a reasonable basis. This revenue measure does require two-thirds voter approval, so it's a higher threshold to pass. And over to the right, you can see a summary of some basic facts about approval of parcel taxes to provide you with some statewide context. You can include an inflationary index with a parcel tax. Currently, there isn't a parcel tax in South San Francisco. There was a citizens initiative in 2022, Measure DD, that failed to get the majority vote that is required for a citizens initiative. And then also data on the right on how parcel taxes have fared at the ballot box, fairly strong approval rates, especially when designated for a special purpose. Because of the two-thirds voter approval, because of special tax, you can dedicate it for a special purpose. So we looked at three different examples and hypotheticals of how a parcel tax might be structured in South San Francisco. The first is the flat amount per parcel as a starting point. So every parcel, no matter the land use or the size, gets the same amount. And so to raise approximately 14 million total, again, hypothetical of 770 parcel tax for each parcel. And then we looked at, just to incorporate some more equity into the methodology, we looked at one based on differing, differentiating between land use and parcel size. So this is still a flat tax rate, but it is, we're showing numbers based on the average parcel size, but it does differentiate between land use. You'll see the single-family residential, multifamily, or commercial office industrial. You could differentiate a little bit further and delineate different tierings based on actual parcel size. So this would be a fixed rate, but would be different on properties based on the parcel size. And again, here is, just looking at an example of how you might tier it to get to a total of the 14 million, does also differentiate a little bit more with the size of the single-family residential properties. So to summarize, really one of the strong pros of a parcel tax is that it is not, is more insulated to economic fluctuations. You can make it a little more equitable, as we mentioned, with the different tierings and differentiations. The voter threshold is quite high, but has been relatively strong, especially, as I mentioned, if designated for special purposes. The example that we gave you to generate approximately 14 million, though, would be on the upper end in terms of your surrounding communities compared to surrounding communities. The next revenue measure we analyze is the utility user tax. This is a tax on the bill based upon usage and consumption of the utility service. You can tier it based on different uses, but again, this must meet the reasonableness test. There's not a lot of datas on cities adopting a new UUT over the last several decades. There's only 32% approval rate for new or increased UUT rates statewide. Most have been increases and not a new tax. The public tends to react differently to taxes on utility consumption. So again, the box to the right, that just gives you some statewide facts on UUTs. So again, looking at how you might get to approximately 14 million, we looked at different rates. And this is estimated, and also looking at how you compare it to neighboring cities. But you would be an outlier at a 7% here, which is, again, where we think you would be, need to be to get to 14 million. And just again, only three in the last two decades in the Bay Area has passed a new UUT, significantly different than the other revenue measures that we're looking at. Again, we looked at the three rates, as you see there are 5%, 6%, 7%. You'll see a range because there is a proxy for telecom, which is a little bit more difficult to project. So again, just to summarize, pros versus cons on the UUT. UT revenues, they are a little bit less volatile than some other more economic sensitive revenues. You can establish different rates as well, just to mitigate any regressive nature of the tax. The voter approval is really the major con here. And again, not a lot of data on new UUTs going to the ballot box. And in terms of adequacy, again, you'd be at a higher rate than your surrounding communities to get to that 14 million of revenue. Finally, we looked at the real property transfer tax. And this is a tax imposed on the transfer of title or real property from one person or entity to another. This is in addition to the documentary transfer tax, which is at $1.10 per 1,000 of sale price. Currently, half of that revenue goes to the county and half goes to the city under the statute. But if the city were to adopt a real property transfer tax, the county would get all of that $1.10. Now again, this is a tax based upon sale price of the property. It's imposed at the point of sale. You only see it at the close of the real estate transaction within the city. And it can be paid by the buyer or the seller or split. This can be negotiated between the buyer and the seller. And it can be imposed as a flat rate per thousand, but some have used a percent of sale price rate. This can only be imposed by a charter city. So this would require two steps to adopt the tax. The voters need to approve the city charter, and they also would need to approve the tax. This can be done on the same ballot, however. Again, to the right, some statewide facts on real property transfer tax for your context. So to raise, and I want to emphasize, on average, 14 million annually, we would be at $11 per 1,000 sale price or 1.1%. Not necessarily an outlier if east of the Bay, but yes, on the peninsula. And just to note, there are two cities where, who did go through the process of adopting the charter and tax measure on the same ballot. That's Emeryville and El Cerrito, but it's pretty unprecedented. Most have been, others have been charter cities for decades and then decided to adopt the RPPT. The major challenge with this tax is not only becoming the charter city, but it's on the revenue side. There's significant year-to-year variation, as you can imagine, since this is based on sales and value of the sale transaction. Looking at the city's history here, you can see a huge variability in revenue just on the documentary transfer tax. And then we mapped that data, the sales and transactions data. And the blue line is what it would have looked like if had the city had the $11 real property transfer tax in place during that time. So as you can see, revenue could, was as low as 6.1 million or could have been as high as 26.4 million. And this can be really difficult if you're trying to target, you know, a number like 14 million approximately to fund services and operations of the city. Great for one-time expenses, you know, one year, you do great. You can stock that away in reserves or spend it on one-time expenses. It's more difficult when you're looking at ongoing operating expenses to fill. Again, with the pros and cons of the RPPT, this does, is, requires a majority vote. We talked about also the volatility being really the main con of this ballot measure. Competitiveness, you would be on the higher side. And again, the charter approval process is a unique aspect of this revenue measure. The next two slides rank the four revenue measures that we just discussed. And we, we ranked transactions and use tax, parcel tax, UUT, and then the RPPT. And as noted in the staff report, we ranked these against the four considerations that we reviewed. And again, it's not about selecting which, which revenue measure to put on the ballot, but rather which ones to take the next step and evaluate and find more data through scientific surveying. We believe that surveying for revenue measures would not give you the data that you could really use, come back with really, really large confidence level margins. And again, you can revisit the other two revenue measures when survey comes back and more information comes back on voter support. Finally, we just have an example timeline for you to get to that November 3, 2026 election deadline. You do have a lot of time, so it's great that you're starting early. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Appreciate the presentation. Any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Coleman?
A couple of questions. And then I do have comments, but I can wait till later. So for the sales tax, you mentioned the regional measure and that they're considering a quarter cent. Are they considering any other options? Or do you see a quarter cent as the most likely of what they choose, assuming we opt in, right, of that measure?
Which would have more detail on that, but that is what we've heard is considering extension and then possible initial quarter cent.
Because I also have heard like an eighth cent is possible, half cent possible. Do you know where, is it hard to tell right now?
So what I've seen in the media is that it's polling better in other counties that it's required. And as you mentioned, San Mateo is, San Mateo County is considering its options. I've seen that it is not polling as well in San Mateo County. But I've seen, you know, ranges from an eighth of a cent to upwards of a half a cent.
And also, I believe there was a recent poll in some community desire to change this revenue measure from sales to grocery receipts. Is that correct?
I have not seen that. If it were a grocery receipts tax, I think that would be more like a business license or excise tax, but I have not seen that.
Would be definitely distinctive from a TUT. It wouldn't be the same authorization. So that's a different, yeah. Grocery receipts typically apply to a business license.
Yes, I understand it's a different type of tax. I'm saying that the TA or I guess MTC is also potentially considering a grocery receipts tax in place of a sales tax.
I think it depends on the polling. If I can jump in, I'll just say that San Mateo County is, will be reviewing polling at the next TA meeting in July. And that's going to dictate a lot in terms of the conversation if San Mateo County decides to opt in or not. I will tell you that when the TA will make the decision, it'll be the end of July to opt in or not.
All right. So I will say I have been following the transit, the regional transit measure, and there was a poll conducted by SEIU. And I think through their advocacy, they're hoping that, in SEIU's perspective, that this regional measure is funded through grocery receipts tax and not a sales tax. And in their poll that included San Mateo County, the grocery receipts tax polled higher than the sales tax. So there's the answer.
That's the new poll that you're referring to?
Correct.
The group that came out. I understand what you're talking about. Okay. You have any other questions?
My next question. San Mateo, you know, it's mentioned that they're also looking at potential revenue measures for next year. I did contact one of their councilmembers. She said that they're going to do some polling. She didn't say much else. Do you have any information on what options that they will be polling?
They're starting that process and they have not made the decision yet. But again, they are one of the cities in San Mateo County that are not capped out for the sales tax.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else with other questions? Or comments? Or let me ask, any public comments, Amanda?
There are no public comments.
And let's do comments.
So I think part of my reluctance on the sales tax side is that we just did that with Measure W. At least for me, it feels like we just did that. And the, the way you sell that, we already use that with the public, the, you know, the need to, for public safety or whatever. So I don't know if we can go back to the well in the same manner. And I think, you know, I've heard some people speak about, you know, what they spend and how little is taxable. So, you know, we shouldn't worry so much about the sales tax going up marginally. But I actually had a family member who was not good with his money. And he used to say that there's too much month left at the end of the money because the wallet was empty. And that's funny, except that his wallet was often empty. And, and I think Councilman Coleman brought up an interesting twist because, you know, we generally don't have a lot of retail selling as far as clothing and whatever. But I wonder where the young families purchase the shoes for their children or the backpack for their school. I don't know that I want to squeeze them harder. It's really bothered me. There are people who run out of money every month. And I don't think I need to squeeze them for another $4 or $5 in additional taxes. It really bothers me. And so as far as what would I be interested in? That pure parcel tax, I think, is something that is doable. And I'm not afraid of being a charter city. I think there are some other advantages. I mean, the city attorney went out of his way to tell us the disadvantages, but some of those disadvantages he'd noted, I really don't see them as disadvantages.
And plus, we can also make it as narrow as possible for, as a charter city.
Yes. And I think that when we, when we looked at that, that chart, that graph that showed the highs and lows, so you can't count on any amount of money, but that's where the discipline comes in. Because, you know, when you have that high year, you need to bank some of that for the, for the low year. So, yeah, I think I would be interested in seeing what people thought about the parcel tax.
So I'm hearing two and, and four for you. Councilmember Nagas?
Yeah, you know, usually sales tax is something you can kind of bank on, but when you see that 10-point and whatever it's going to be, that's going to be really hard to convince South City voters, say, hey, we want to be one of the highest tax, you know, cities in San Mateo County. And to Councilmember, to Vice Mayor Adieko's point, that affects a lot of families in terms of how they budget their money. And I understand that the majority of the people who are spending the sale tax are out of South San Francisco, but for that 30%, you know, that means- of South San Francisco, but for that 30%, you know, that means a lot. And I was kind of surprised that a lot of the sales tax is coming from Westboro. So, but I'm kind of leaning towards more to a parcel tax. And I think we can, we can tailor it in a way, and I think you'd agree in terms of the tier system might be a way of doing it. I kind of disagree with my colleagues. I'm not, I don't really support the real property transfer tax. I think it's just too volatile. As you can see, it all depends on how the market is in terms of housing. And the trend's been going down. And so I would rather maybe focus on a parcel tax, but if we need, if we need a second option, I guess I would go with DOD. But I think I would favor the parcel tax over anything else.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Councilmember Nagas.
And Mark, I just wanted to add, because you mentioned the real property transfer tax, and on the residential side can be very volatile. But remember, South San Francisco has, what, 40% of the commercial space in San Mateo County? So, I mean, if you know what money has slipped through our fingers in some of those major projects that have flipped, and the developers that we have developing eventually want their money out so they can move in a different direction and develop something else. So whether it's a hotel or whether it's the big multifamily stuff that has already flipped, and you'll see a lot of that, those buildings flipping when they get close to the 10 years because that's when the game changes. They might become condominiums. So it's the commercial side. I'll bet the high number was, was commercial properties, that $26 billion.
Yeah, that's where.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Councilmember Nicholas.
No, no, I agree with the Vice Mayor that, you know, that is a bigger picture. It's not just the single-family homes or the little, you know, mom and pops, but the big ones are the ones we can bank on.
Did you want to provide any feedback or comments on where you're leaning?
More on the parcel, the transfer taxes. I mean, I'm not afraid also of making it this charter city.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Coleman?
My big problem with the sales tax is that they're regressive and especially in this moment in time where we are. But I think what's most likely are going to rise out of the transit measure is going to be a sales tax. And then we have tariffs on top of that, which is essentially a sales tax. And we're going to see our working and middle-class families really be squeezed in the next couple of years. And I don't want to squeeze them any further. I like a parcel tax because it is, it can be more progressively structured. I didn't even know it had an 80% pass rate, and I like those chances. I also want to say, I do like the idea of a property transfer tax, but this is not a tax that should be used to plug a general fund deficit. I see a property transfer tax as something to pay for capital projects, to go into our affordable housing fund. And that's, as mentioned, due to its volatility. I am not afraid of becoming a charter city. El Salvador has done it. I think we have some experience in the room making that happen in El Salvador. And I've talked to our council colleagues from El Salvador who only have good things to say with that process. So I think you did a really good job. And San Bruno has also strongly considered it. And they had three, in previous years, they had three votes to put on the ballot. They did not have the fourth. And so there is a council majority in San Bruno that does want to see this happen. And maybe we could make that happen. One thing with the property transfer taxes, you know, I'm looking in the future, one thing to be careful of is redevelopment of affordable housing, right? We don't want to stymie or further put a barrier in front of affordable housing, but there is a lot of commercial redevelopment that could provide a lot of additional dollars towards affordable housing and capital projects and so on. And so with that said, I mean, if I were to wave a magic wand, 2026 is when we do a parcel tax, and maybe 2028 is when we look at a property transfer tax.
Thank you. I think city manager here, you're tracking. I'll say that definitely not the utility user tax. That totally taken off. I don't think anyone has interest or appetite on that. We're not going to remove electricity, gas, water, sewer right now. These are very dire times on that. I would, I'm kind of interested on both, the real property transfer tax, parcel tax as well, but more leaning towards the charter piece. Want to explore a little bit what that would look like too. That's where I'm at. Do you have tallies there? Direction?
I believe I do. I didn't hear any sales tax enthusiasts. So I think we're looking, I mean, the most interest is in the parcel tax and the transfer tax.
So two and four?
Yeah. Is that?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fox. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate that. Next item.
Item 12, Report Regarding the Proposed Capital Improvement Program for the Fiscal Year 2025-26.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Matt Ruble, your Principal Engineer. Tonight, I come before you to share the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2526. This is a follow-on from our budget meeting presentation, and I look forward to hearing your comments tonight. We are joined by other departments, so if you have specific project questions, please let us know. The CIP outlines major capital expenditures and infrastructure improvements throughout our city. For fiscal year 2526, we are proposing a $208 million budget, which includes $24 million in new appropriations. And this encompasses 184 projects consisting of 10 new projects and 174 continuing projects. The graph before you shows the number of projects and the approximate value of those Fortunately for our city, the CIP projects are funded by various funding sources shown on this table. It is worth noting that no general fund dollars are proposed in the CIP budget request. And now we have a chance to step through the projects that are requesting funding. This will be laid out as the, give the project title. You'll see the amount being requested, the current funding in the bottom left-hand corner. And we usually have an illustration of what the project is and a map to demonstrate where the project is in town. So the first project is the Orange Memorial Park Main Playground Replacement. This is applying unused 2022 bond funds from the Orange Memorial Park Sport Fields Project that have to be spent on certain defined projects. It'll be replacing the existing playground surface and equipment and installing new all-inclusive play elements. Next project is the Centennial Trail Improvements. This will be constructing new park spaces along Centennial Trail, funding the design and construction of Centennial Way Park South and replacing previously planned grant Next would be the Linden Park Project, converting two vacant lots into a neighborhood park and cultural plaza and increasing the project budget to incorporate public art. Next is the dedicated pickleball courts, constructing new pickleball courts at Orange Memorial Park and adding noise attenuation measures and upgrading the surfacing. Next, we have Cypress and Pine Park renovations. So renovating Cypress and Pine Park with new play features, furnishing, landscaping, and other upgrades. Playground surfacing at the City Hall Tot Lot, Avalon Park, and Westboro Park. This will be replacing the degraded, end-of-life rubberized surface of the three playgrounds. Next is the Orange Memorial Park Stormwater Capture Project. This project constructed a stormwater capture system with pretreatment and piping to treat water coming out of the creek. We need additional resources to fully utilize the available grant funds and to ensure the system's working properly. Next, we have Oyster Point Pump Station. It's constructing a new pump station to support the development at Oyster Point. Project is wrapping up design, and this will be funding for construction. Next, we have the Sanitary Sewer Rehab for fiscal year 2526. It's rehabilitating the gravity sewer lines based on sewer master plan and inspection reports. Target areas are shown on the map, and this will be primarily in the very, very neighborhood as you see. Next, we have the Harbor Way Sewer Main Upsizing. This will be to start the designing for the upsizing of the sewer main infrastructure along Harbor Way to support development. Next, we have the Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Master Plan. This will be performing a assessment, condition, a condition assessment and capacity of all sewer pump stations and their associated force mains. Next is the Bridge Preventive Maintenance Program. This is to rehabilitate the nine city bridges identified on the map, funding for construction management, non-participating costs, and our local match for state funding. Next, we have the Underground Utility District for Mission Road. This will be constructing an underground utility district on Mission Road from Grant Avenue to the South San Francisco Barge Station. Funds are to help replace the city-owned streetlights and to address cost escalation for the project. Next is the Ginpera Sierra Boulevard/Westboro Boulevard Corridor Feasibility Project. The project is to install bike and pedestrian facilities along JS and Westboro as shown on the map, and the additional funds are needed for local match and project management Next is the 2026 Surface Seal Project to perform asphalt maintenance in the area shown on the map, and this will be to deserve our design and construction costs. Next, we have the Tamperan Avenue Reconstruction. This will be to do a full street reconstruction on Tamperan Avenue between San Mateo Avenue and Railroad Place, and this will be to do the design for that project. We're almost there. Citywide miscellaneous striping is to install, maintain street markings and roadway stripings around the city. Next is a citywide trip hazard. This is to repair sidewalks and mitigate trip hazards per the city's recent assessment at, along city properties. We have the 2027 Surface Seal, which will start the design process for the surface treatments and as shown on the map. Next, we have the Payment Repair and Crack Seal. This is to address payment distresses including cracks, rutting, and potholes in asphalt. This will be citywide. Smart Corridors Project is to implement intelligent transportation system improvements along US 101 north of 380 as shown on the map. The Miscellaneous Traffic Improvement Program funds TAC reviews and implements traffic-related requests. So if members of the public are requesting stop signs, speed bombs, new crossings, this fund helps do that evaluation and some of the light implementation. Next project is the Traffic Studies and Grant Support. It provides a fund to do neighborhood traffic studies and apply for grants in order to implement those recommendations. And lastly, we have the Colma/South San Francisco Alcaminorial Bike and Pedestrian Improvement Project. As shown on the image to the left, it's to advance key elements of the city's Bike Pad Master Plan, project led by Colma with TA grant support. So the funding request is for the city's share of matching funds for the design phase. That's it for the projects. Lastly, we'll just share a table that shows the projected remaining fund balances if this budget request were to be adopted. It's worth pointing out that the San Mateo County Measure W Fund has an increased funding demand in this fiscal year, resulting in reduced availability compared to the initial projections that we had earlier this year. And so to account for this, when we come back to council later this month, we will be rebalancing one of the projects in order to make sure we don't go negative in this San Mateo County Measure W Fund. Just want to highlight that because that's definitely not a situation we want to be in. And that was a very brief overview, hopefully, of the capital improvement program. With that said, we're definitely happy to go back and discuss any projects or answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for the presentation.
Matt, I just wanted to jump in and say one thing, and since Amanda's here, at the study session, council asked for a better graphic representation. Show us the map and give us a picture. I just want to acknowledge Amanda. I think the PowerPoint is really great, so we just want to thank her for doing that.
Thank you, Amanda. It really points out.
She did all that and ran the meeting. Remarkable.
Anyone else do anything? Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or anyone want to comment on a particular project?
Quite busy.
I do.
Go ahead.
On an agreement of the new projects, I have questions about previous projects. As I was going through the budget book, I'm always interested to see how much money we spent and what we didn't. So one of the things I've always been interested is the pocket parks. And on one of the items, Common Greens Rank Study and Implementation, is the pocket parks, is that part of the Common Greens?
Yes, and I'm going to ask actually Director Mediani. I think he's prepared to speak to this.
The reason why I bring it up is, is we, the pocket parks that I've seen in some of the neighborhoods could be better. And I've seen, you know, some of the money we haven't spent, and I'm wondering if you can walk me through, Mr. Mediani, like, I know that these are expensive items, but I can tell you, I've seen pocket parks that are closed, literally they're fenced off, and that doesn't look good in neighborhoods. And so what is the plan? Are we doing in terms of improving these pocket parks?
Yeah, certainly. So as part of our current budget, we have our Parks and Rec Master Plan project funded, and we have the deferred maintenance assessments, which include the Common Greens. And currently, you might recall, we have the Parks 11 Program and several other projects that were funded, but not adequately funded. So our hope is to look at sort of system-wide, all our deferred maintenance as part of this, the master plan, come before you all and try to get some input from you and the community of like, of those deferred maintenance needs, what are the priorities? And then looking at our cash we have in hand and then our cash flow and programming out all those improvements. So I actually went to the Common Greens today after we heard your comment and looked at one of the parks that is closed. There are visible gaps in the flooring of the playgrounds, and it is, yeah, it is definitely a hazard. So I've asked our staff to go start shopping with some of our vendors to get a sense of how much that might cost to repair those sort of urgent things. We can't wait for the Parks and Rec Master Plan to really address, and then we'll come back before you all with some findings on that.
Because the last thing I want to do is compete with my colleagues in terms of park funds, because I know we're going to be building some parks in Cypress, and hopefully we'll do that also in District 1 soon, you know? But we have these parks that have been established, and that, like, that part of the park you mentioned, that's been closed for a while now, and it just not, does not look good in terms of the community. And so when I see unspent funds, that kind of gets, perks me up a little bit. And so I'll mention the last park and I'll stop. You know, that Sellic Park, I know a gaggle of us went down to Sellic Park to take a look at, and I know there's a huge amount of repair that needs to be done there. But I think we do owe it to the community to do some work there, because I noticed that there is some funds allocated, and we still haven't spent a good portion of that. And so if we can look and see what we can do to do some approvals to the play area, I would really appreciate that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could just add, I think it's important at some point that we all get, become aware of how the Common Greens were created, how the taxation worked, and there is some money on property tax that goes into a Common Greens fund, which is nowhere near enough to cover the needs today. But it has to do with Proposition 13, and, you know, instead of, if other communities, if other neighborhoods, instead of having backyard... if other neighborhoods, instead of having backyards, had Common Greens, then the city would be taking care of all of those. So I just, I just need to push back a little bit because it's a very unique situation, and I'm not sure it has to solely be a burden for the entire city to keep it at a level that the property tax can't be taken.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I do have a question, but for a previous project.
Go ahead.
In this team of previous projects. So the intersection on Arroyo and Jennifer Sarah, I believe that there's going to be a stoplight there, some residents have been asking, and so what's the status on that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. City Council recently approved the construction for a new traffic signal at the intersection of Jennifer Sarah and Arroyo Boulevard. So that project is recently had its notice received, and the contractor is starting construction.
And do we know when the date would start and be completed? The date of start and completion?
I don't have that in front of me right now, but we can follow up with an update.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And based on lessons learned for the traffic light, we have to go to PG&E and make sure that they will have the lights turned on when the traffic light's completed.
That is correct. We're coordinating closely with PG&E to do our best on that, yeah.
Thanks.
Councilmember Nicholas, do you have any comments or questions?
Can you, Matt, thank you for the presentation and making it brief and moving us through it. For those folks that are wondering, how does this budget separate from the general fund? As you mentioned, none of these are general fund. Can you highlight just really quickly what the criteria is to select these projects? I know you mentioned it in the staff report, however, folks probably are not reading the staff report that are watching. I want the community to know, how did, how does this list come together?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Let me flip back to an earlier slide where we show the funding for the project. One more, here we go. So when the CIP budget is being set, each department or planning documents have identified needs of projects around our city. Projects are then put into list of priorities, and we see what funding is available to fund various projects. So projects such as a sewer replacement project is funded out of the sewer fund, and so we check the available need of the projects based on the available funding for that, which is inevitable. Every year, the funding demand exceeds the available funding capacity. So staff applies a few rules as we look at the projects, such as, is it a legally mandated project? Do we have to perform this? Is it a project that has grant funding associated with it, in which case if we were to not fund it, the project, we could lose the funding for? Are we mid-construction and we need to finish the project, you know? So we look at kind of a set of criteria of what we have to fund before we look at what we would like to fund. And different funding sources have different limitations on what they can be spent on. Of all the funding sources listed on the screen, each one has a discrete set of rules of what it's an eligible expense for, and so that's, we try to do our best to maximize our available funding and to not affect the limited general fund dollars for the city.
Great, thank you. And just to highlight, the CIP includes 184 projects, 10 of which are new, 174 are continuing projects.
That's correct.
That's certainly a lot of balls in the air, so, you know, well done. I do have a question, though, of all those projects, is there an amount of money from those funds that goes to the different people in Public Works that are doing what you're doing as engineers? Is each of these projects backfills some of?
Yes, so we're fortunate that the project managers have the opportunity to charge their time to deliver these projects to the funding sources for that project. So if they're spending, you know, four hours that day working on this project, four hours on their time card goes to that and is not a general fund burden.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate the presentation. This is for information report only. We will be approving and voting at the next council meeting. Thank you again. Checking in on my colleagues, would you like a break or should we power it through? You do? Okay, let's recess for five minutes, come back in five minutes, please.
Recording stopped.
All right, let's bring up the recording again.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. We'll reconvene now. Next item, please. Item 13.
Item 13, Report Regarding a Resolution Confirming the Change in Solid Waste Collection Rates to Be Collected by the South San Francisco Scavenger Company effective July 1, 2025. Item 13A is the resolution.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Karen Chang, Finance Director. So tonight, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving the Consumer Price Index-based Rate Adjustments to the Solid Waste and Bio-Solid Transportation Rates in accordance with the city's franchise agreement with the South San Francisco Scavenger Company effective July 1, 2025. So this adjustment reflects a scheduled rate change based on 80% of the Consumer Price Index as outlined in the terms of the franchise agreement. For solid rates, the CPI base increase is 2.17%, and for bio-solid transportation, the adjustment is 2.76%, consistent with the state mandate and our recent agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger Company. City staff has reviewed and verified that the rate adjustments submitted by the South San Francisco Scavenger are accurate and in compliance with the terms of the agreement and CPI methodology. So one thing that I would like to correct is like there was a typo on their staff report. The next rate study is supposed to be March 41, 2027, not 28. So a summary of the current and proposed rate can be found on the attachment one of the staff report. And representative from the Scavenger Company I hear this evening to present an update on the capital improvement program as required by the annual, annually under the franchise agreements. And thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions before I turn over to Scavenger Company.
I think we are good with questions. Thank you, Director Chang. Let's proceed with the other part of the presentation.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn over to Doug Button from Scavenger Company. Thank you.
I'm operating this, just, just to dance it, okay. Hi, I'm Doug Button with the San Francisco, South San Francisco Scavenger Company. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. So just an update on what we've been doing the last year. There's three topics I like to talk on or just touch on. Electric vehicles and RNG, which is renewable natural gas equipment, all of our trucks and vehicles, 1383 compliance, and the annual on-call cleanups that we do at the residence. So first with the equipment. It's been a challenge the last couple of years trying to get equipment. We've been doing it, we've been replacing it, but there was the clean fleet rule that I know the cities are aware of, where we were required to have everything electric by 2036, and yet the vehicles were not available. They're just not capable of doing the work that we need. You need a 10-hour duty cycle, you need a 10-ton load. But that's been a little relaxed, and currently we've got two new front loaders. We've got two more on order. We got a side loader with four more on order, and we got two roll-offs with two more on order. And the EV class, which we're still actively pursuing, trying to get the best thing we can out there, we've got a flatbed, a fork truck, and a new forklift. There are some pictures of them right here. You can see the flatbed truck, you can see the front loader, our fork truck, that's all-electric, and the roll-off truck that's renewable natural gas. The on-call cleanups, so we've been doing these for a number of years at the residence, and each year it gets better and better. It's gone up 5% from the previous year. Last year, we did approximately almost 8,000 cleanups. Most people do them in the last quarter of the year. For some reason, that's, everybody thinks they're going to lose it, and they call us at the last minute, but we've been able to handle them all. We advertise in all four newsletters to the residents and the service guide that we have for new residents, and it's also described on our website. You can see a couple of examples here of what goes out to the newsletter, and it's always advertised, and like I said, not, most people take advantage in the last quarter. I encourage them to do it now if you want to have spring cleaning, summer cleaning. We're available when you get twice a year. The next is 1383 compliance. This is probably the most challenging. It's the Short Climate Pollution Reduction Act that was passed a couple of years ago. California has about 5 million tons of organic waste that was going into landfills, and it's been outlawed. We have to get 75% of it out, and I don't just mean the garbage company, I mean every resident, every business, everybody in the state of California. If not, there's going to be action by the cities, by the state, that people will get fined, but we've had this program with the residents for a couple of years where we added not only the green waste, we added the food waste and soil paper and everything to the process, but businesses, commercial properties, and multifamily properties weren't necessarily compliant. A lot of them were reluctant to do it, they don't have the space, they don't have a real need that they think, and so they were, you know, for example, a number of condo units that we had, they have gardeners, and so they're like, we don't need this service, but they do because they have food waste, they have other soil papers, they have pizza boxes, they need that stuff. So currently, we've been handing out materials to everybody, including green bins, Slim Jims, kitchen pails, tote bags, educational handouts, and assistance with them on how they can start and use this system. We've just kind of almost concluded about 850 condo units in the Westboro and Stonegate area that we've given all new services to, including the food waste program, they're all on. Another thing that we've been doing, we conducted over 1,100 lid flips in the last year. 1383 requires that somebody goes out and looks to see if people are doing things right. So we have to send a crew out. Mind you, we give them all the gear and visibility that we can so that people don't think they're just somebody going through their garbage, but literally we meet with businesses, we meet with homeowners, and we show them what's properly done or what's improper. And if you look at the next slide here, you'll see that we thank people for doing it correctly. We give them an oh no notice that here's what you need to do to improve, and if you find the note on your cart, you can see if you need to improve or if you don't, and we tell you how to do it right. And to date, we've had a lot of cooperation, it's getting better, and I'm happy to say I don't believe anybody's going to get fined for now or in the future, but it takes a lot of cooperation and a lot of work, and we're going to continue doing that and continue expanding whatever we can. I thank you if you have any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have questions for my colleague? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'm still waiting for my thank you note. I am an obsessed recycler and have been for a long time, so come on out, 351. Other way.
Well, as we said, we have, there's a certain number that we have to do every year, and we did 1,100 last year, and that's above what, what's required, but we've been going out and getting positive results, but I thank you.
So I think one of the real, real strengths of the South San Francisco Scavenger Company is the multiple generation aspect of the partners and the people that are actually providing the service. And with the mayor's permission, it might be nice for you to introduce-
Yes, please welcome your team, and I know that you have stayed here quite late into the meeting, apologies for that, could have moved the item up. If you would like to introduce your staff, please.
I would. So we've been around 112 years, under franchise for probably 60, 70 of them, but we're lucky, there's seven shareholders now, and- and we're uh, Paul and I are the old guys, we're the, we're the second generation, but we have a couple of third and fourth generation. As my son says, they're waiting, he's in waiting, because we're still working, but maybe they can stand up. It's Sabrina Bertoli, who's our newest shareholder, her father Edward, who most of you know, just retired, and Sabrina's been working for her for sixteen years. And then we have uh, Michael Fermosa, whom a lot of you have seen last year and whatnot, he's been around for a while, waiting for his father to retire. And my son David Button, he's right there, he's been there since last October, uh, and kind of pushing me out the door too, but um, they enjoy, they enjoy it, I can say that Michael's a CPA, David has twenty years working in accounting, he was a thing, uh, he's been all involved in this for the last twenty years, doing the same things I do and the same thing Paul does, and um, that team is gonna do very good in the future.
Mr. Mayor, I think with those introductions, Paul and Doug are cleared to depart.
Thank you for that. Uh, any other questions or comments?
No, I'd just like to applaud your thirteen eighty-three efforts because I have been into, uh, have invited some people in my house, and when I showed them that, you know, the food particles had to be here, they were like so surprised, it hasn't been heard of in Diggler City or San Francisco, and so I really am very proud of what you guys are doing. Thank you.
You know, and with that, I didn't say, one of the things we do with the food, as as you know, but not everybody out there does, we get people who come for tours all the time, uh, the food and the yard waste is actually kind of composted or digested on-site, and that food is running the trucks that are going through the city. It makes methane and we're running our trucks on it, and it's carbon negative, and we're doing the best we can.
And I really still believe that, you know, if we educate more of the young kids, because, you know, some of those graduates from Westboro Middle School, I see them at Saint Augustine painstakingly making sure that the food items are, you know, separated out, and they do this every Sunday, I was so proud.
Yeah, no, I am too, that's a great job they do. Thank you.
Great, I do have a question.
Sure.
So you do provide animal locks for your bins, is that correct?
Do we provide animal locks for the?
Yes.
Yes, we have, uh, well, we have locks that are key lock for theft and overloads that bins that are out there that we provide. We have locks that for the garbage and recycling carts that you can put on there that um, unfortunately they're not wonderful or perfect, but they keep the lids closed as long as they're not overloaded, and they self-open when they're tipped, and the idea is they keep animals out, they keep the birds out, they keep uh, the raccoons out and all of that, but it has to be closed to begin with, it can't be half-open because that's the opportunity.
Right, so, so there's a theory uh, from, from a neighbor in South City, and I thought, okay, maybe I'll ask Scavenger next time they're, they're here, uh, but basically, South City is a windy city, right?
I get it.
And a lot of wind sometimes blows these bins over, and some of that trash kind of, you know, ends up on a street, and the wind, of course, blows it around. Is there a way for if a bin tips over, let's say due to wind, that there is some sort of locking mechanism that prevents it from opening and spilling out?
There isn't a perfect one out there. The one that I'm using on the garbage can at my house, because I'm trying it, it's supposed to be, it has to be over ninety degrees, but if it falls down really hard because of wind or somebody pushes it over or hits it with a car, it's gonna open up, it's gonna open up. Uh, and they do make one that you can actually, it's a key lock, but that would add so much time and everything to, to a route, you know, it's all about time and motion.
Thank you. I, I actually do have one request, maybe it's for the third and fourth generation folks here, but I, I would like um, a little bit more visibility, and um, Madam City Manager, maybe we can connect our communications manager on this. I think we have a perfect opportunity through the weekly newsletter. How, how often does your, you said four times a year, your newsletter goes out, or?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe around the time that that happens, maybe some of the graphics, some of the language can also be incorporated into our newsletter, um, both the thirteen, both the annual cleanups and the thirteen eighty-three information, and also maybe even if you could develop something in Spanish, uh, maybe it's a one sheet that you could also put that out, because that's really important information. This goes to multi-unit and single-family or just single-family?
It goes to single families, we do have uh, a, a commercial one that we send to multi-families and the businesses, twice a year? Twice a year.
Okay.
Twice a year, and in Spanish, and I believe there's a couple languages online on our website.
Okay, so maybe even that information, we could transfer it just to amplify and elevate some of this information. Really cool graphics, so I'd, I'd love, and a QR code, so it's really perfect, we could cross collaborate on and share on that. Great, thank you. Are there any public comments on this?
There are no public comments.
Okay, if not, then I am looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Still moved.
I'll do Vice Mayor first and Councilmember Nicholas second. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Nagalas?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Flores?
Uh, yes, motion passes. Thank you very much for staying and for your service and, and presentation this evening. Thank you, guys. Next item, please.
Item fourteen, report regarding a resolution authorizing the chief of police to execute a memorandum of understanding with San Mateo County law enforcement agencies to provide a standardized approach and method of collection and sharing information within their electronic data systems. Item fourteen A is the resolution.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Eddie, Vice Mayor Adiego and councilmembers. My name is Tony Pennell, and I'm one of your police captains at the police department. Tonight, I'll be asking for council to adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to execute a MOU with the San Mateo County law enforcement agencies to provide a standardized approach and method of collection and sharing of information within their electronic data systems. In San Mateo County, law enforcement agencies have a long history of working collectively, whether it is in the field, during investigations, or through the sharing of data and information. San Mateo County law enforcement agencies, including the South San Francisco Police Department, regularly collaborate to reduce crime, hold violators of the law accountable, and to improve public safety. For many years, the South San Francisco Police Department, along with other San Mateo County law enforcement agencies, have had data sharing agreements in place pertaining to our computer-aided dispatch and records management systems, also known as RIMS, and more recently to include our automated license plate reader uh, data. Having these agreements in place have been invaluable and have allowed our investigators to effectively and more efficiently solve cases, as we are aware that persons who commit crimes in South San Francisco at times also commit similar crimes in other jurisdictions. In twenty twenty-three, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office applied for the Organized Retail Theft Prevention Grant from the California Board of State and Community Corrections, and they were subsequently awarded over fifteen million dollars. The purpose of the grant was to assist law enforcement in preventing and responding to organized retail theft, motor vehicle theft and cargo theft. The South San Francisco Police Department, along with twelve other San Mateo County agencies, were included in the grant as multi-agency partners. As a result of the grant award, the South San Francisco Police Department will have access to a new AI-powered law enforcement system from a Redwood City-based company called C Three AI. The C Three AI application will utilize data, which is already shared and accessible among the San Mateo County law enforcement agencies. This includes data from our CAD systems, record management systems, ALPR, informational bulletins, incarceration data, and other intelligence-based software such as public records databases. What separates this application from the systems we already have in place is that the C Three AI app will now consolidate this information from multiple databases and sources into one platform, thus reducing the time and effort needed to conduct investigations and increasing the chances of solving crime. The artificial intelligence utilized in the C Three AI application is limited to conducting the search functions across multiple programs and databases and providing relevant, organized results to the investigator. By using AI, the speed of the search process is drastically improved, and some, as some records can contain decades of information. What the C Three AI application does not do is use generative AI facial recognition, predict crime, access private social media, control emergency response system, obtain unauthorized data or conduct surveillance. The memorandum of understanding outlines an agreement between county law enforcement agencies for the purpose of securely sharing data in support of public safety efforts and provides a standardized framework for collaboration and data exchange. Only authorized personnel will have access to the shared data for investigative purposes. The system is audited and adheres to federal and state security standards. Our agency retains full control of our data and can restrict access as needed. We can have our data deleted within forty-eight hours with written notice, and we could withdraw from the MOU with ninety days' notice. The MOU also emphasizes data security, proper training for users, compliance with legal standards, respect for privacy rights, and prohibiting the use of the data for immigration enforcement. The MOU also makes it clear that C Three AI application is just a pointer system, and is not to be used as a sole source of probable cause for law enforcement actions. This MOU will be reviewed every three years with, with an option to withdraw or amend the agreement. Lastly, there is no fiscal impact associated with this application, as it is fully funded through the end of twenty twenty-six by the BSCC grant. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Captain. Do you have questions here from our? We'll start Vice Mayor and then.
I think I understood, but can you roll back to when you talked about it's, it's not a pointer? Can you expand on that?
Yes, that's a good question. So it is a pointer system, so basically, the information that we are receiving, we can't rely on it as being one hundred percent factual, we have to verify that information with the contributing agency before taking law enforcement action, so we can't take action based just upon what we find in this database.
Okay. So what is this database?
So this database, it's the C Three AI application, and what it's doing is taking information that we already have access to, um, such as our records management system. So for instance, right now, we have access to all of the police reports in San Mateo County, as long as they're not deemed uh, agency confidential, so I could access San Bruno's police reports right now, I could access San Mateo's police reports, et cetera. Um, what, what this system does is it will bring all those police reports and give me a uh, one return with, with everything on one screen, instead of me having to separately go to San Bruno's uh, cases for a, a person that maybe we have an interest in, uh, investigation, and then go to San Mateo's, and then go to Redwood Cities. I'll be able to uh, search for uh, you know, a, a subject who may be a suspect in a crime, and be able to get all those police uh, reports on one page, so it's a comprehensive result. Um, this will also include ALPR data, so if I'm looking for a suspect in a crime in South City, I can get the police reports, I can get the vehicle that that person may or may not drive, uh, and I can get ALPR data for the last thirty days. So basically, it's, it's, it's taking all that information and putting it on one single platform to make it easier for investigators to solve crime.
That was a good explanation, thank you.
Thank you.
So when you say I, is it pretty much every officer that will have access to it, or is there a particular rank, or how does access, accessibility get determined, who has access on it?
That's a great question. So the people who have access at our organization are all the sworn police officers and the dispatchers as well.
Okay, um, there was something about um, authorized personnel from each agency will have secure regulated access for shared data for investigative purposes, adhering to federal and state security standards. What do you mean by federal and state security standards?
So there's federal and state security standards regarding the um, access to criminal justice information, so for instance, this data is being transmitted over encrypted networks, private networks, and it is, adheres to the best practices of information technology. So it's, it's as secure as, as the data that we already have at our police department because it's confidential information.
But this is not shared access, the database with federal government?
That's correct, so this database is only shared with San Mateo County law enforcement agencies. There is a caveat in the MOU that if, uh, let's say San Francisco PD wanted to join this sharing agreement, they would make a request to the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office would then notify all of the other agencies who are part of the MOU to see if we will approve sharing with that allied agency, so we have the authority to approve if this gets shared outside of San Mateo County or not, and it's not, one hundred percent not going to be shared with any type of immigration enforcement type of agencies or federal agencies.
Okay, thank you.
That, that last point is interesting because you said if San Francisco requests, then everybody will know about it. Um, you know, certainly not all, but so much of the criminal activity comes from other communities, larger communities, um, and, and including some in the East Bay, so um, do you foresee a time where that would be like a two-way street, where we would have access to um, the data in Alameda County or, or San Francisco?
Yes, the ultimate goal um, of the program in the future would be to expand, because as you mentioned, Mr. Vice Mayor, people who commit crime in South San Francisco aren't just from South San Francisco, the vast majority are from outside of um, our community, and a lot do come from the East Bay, San Francisco, South Bay, North Bay, so yes, in the future, the goal would be to expand the program to other municipal and county law enforcement agencies in the Bay Area, because the more information that we're able to share with them and that they're able to share with us will allow us to better solve crimes.
Are there any other counties or jurisdictions doing something similar that, of what is being proposed here?
Uh, there are, there's another similar type program that is being utilized by agencies in the East Bay, um, and I'll also believe that there's other agencies that are considering uh, the alternate program, but it does the, the similar uh, thing that C Three AI is doing, which is taking multiple databases and putting them on the one platform.
I'm sorry, I'm intrigued by this, so certainly if you're looking for someone, then you are accessing all the reports that are at every agency in the county.
Yes, so if we had a crime in South San Francisco and I have a, a suspect, or, or even just a, a vehicle, a license plate, I could put that information into this application, and then it'll give me the results from all the contacts with either that person or the license plate throughout the county, and then I could read uh, through those contacts to further help me investigate my case.
And so if a crime occurred in a certain manner, um, could you plug in the variables and, and um, find a like crime in another community? It's, 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 it's extreme, but there have been cases where.
Same MO.
Pardon?
Same MO, models.
Yeah, yeah, where, um, you know, sometimes officers, detectives bump into stuff, you know, just happenstance, but could you actually put in those variables and?
Yes, actually, we could, so let's say if I'm investigating um, robberies, I could put in the code for robberies, and I could put in uh, you know, the type of vehicle that we're looking for, and I could find uh, what, where robberies have occurred in the county, um, and then I could narrow it down to robberies that occurred with a similar type suspect vehicle.
Power of AI, any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Just a reassurance that, you know, everybody will be trained in here, and I assume that everybody has their own personal um, um, access codes, and so therefore there can be audit history. Is that also a requirement for everybody who accesses this?
Yes, one hundred percent, and, and for that very reason, by everyone having their own access code, then we are able to backtrack and trace when someone accessed the program and who accessed it.
Yeah, and I mean, in other agencies, like for example, someone in San Bruno, they do the same thing.
Yes, all of the participating agencies will operate under those same procedures, everyone will have their own login, and it will be uh, trackable.
Thank you.
And, and in his presentation, he said that um, you won't be able to predict crime, but is there a point where you'll be able to?
Um, I don't know what the future brings, I know that AI is very strong uh, technology and it's growing, but right now, it does not have that ability.
Maybe not in our time.
Do we have any public comment, Amanda?
There are no public comments.
Okay, uh, thank you for the Q and A here, uh, do I have, um, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
So moved, I'll second.
First and a second, can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagalas?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Captain Pennell, very well presented. Uh, next item, please.
Items from.
Items from council, committee reports, and announcements.
I just wanted to congratulate our councilmember Nagales, who was reappointed as San Mateo County representative to the Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG, for a term of four years. It was voted this past Sunday by a, Monday, by a majority of the 20 mayors of San Mateo County, so congratulations. Thank you. Go ahead.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add that this meeting be adjourned in memory of one of my coworkers. I was just informed that he died in an avalanche at the Dinelli National Park in Preserv, and he's only a 29-year-old, wonderful man, and may his soul rest in peace. His name is Nicholas Vazini.
Amen.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Do I have a?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
One small thing, I believe June 3rd was supposed to be scheduled a school district liaison committee, I don't know if something came up, but maybe we could get something on the calendar, please?
Next agenda, our next meeting, I believe, is in September, if I'm not correct.
Well, there was. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other reports or announcements? Okay, next agenda item, please.
Closed session. Item 15, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives. Sharon Reynolds, city manager, Rich Lee, Assistant City Manager, Leah Lockhart, Human Resources Director, Jesse Ladd, Redwood Public Law, Christopher Boucher, Boucher Law, Employee Organizations, AFSCME, AFSMI Local 829, IAFF Local 1507, SSF Police Association, Teamsters Local 856 Confidential, Teamsters Local 856 Midman Management, Unrepresented Groups Executive Management, Public Safety Managers.
And before I recess to closed session, I'd like to thank you, Amanda Parker, for your very excellent, well-done execution of tonight. Thank you very much. And well, with that, everyone, have a good night. We'll recess to closed session. Thank you.